Thank you for coming to the school committee tonight. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance. Before we get started tonight, I'd like to ask everybody to join in a moment of silence for the passing of Gilbert Dort. He was a custodian truck driver. He retired back in 1995 and he put sixteen years and nine months in with the school district. He started in Federal Furnace Elementary School, went on to Plymouth Carver High School, Coal Spring Elementary, and then worked the rest of his time with us as a maintenance truck driver. So if we could all share in a moment of silence for him. Thank you. Now, we have comments from the community? Anybody from the community want to address the school committee tonight? Seeing no one, we'll move on to our next one. Plymouth South, school representative update. Veronica?
Hello. So first this evening, we would like to give a great big, huge congratulations to the marching band. We're really proud of the work we've done this season. And we got first place yesterday. We won the Division Four Championship at Nezba finals in Lawrence yesterday, so we're very proud of that and very happy how far we've come. Also, we want to say we had a great time last Friday at the football game, the North-South game. It was a great game, and we were glad that so many middle schoolers were able to come and join the band. It was really a fun time. Also, South is really proud that our Lee Denham Pink Day and the senior class selling pink "Super Fan" shirts, they call them, those in the two different events raised over a thousand dollars for breast cancer research. So, we're very happy about that. Our fashion talent show was last week, and that went very well. The district's therapy dog came and did an act, and apparently he actually won the costume contest, so I'm glad to say that. Also, our boys soccer, field hockey, volleyball, and football teams all made tournament this season, so we're very proud of them. Good job to all of the students involved. Our dance and cheer teams have league competitions this weekend, so good luck to them. We hope they'll find success as well. This Friday night is the first coffee house of the season for the high school VPA, so that'll be at Memorial Hall. I think it starts at six or seven, so we're excited for that. Also, on the same sort of trend, South has our first fall musical, and it's just a South production, and we're really proud of all the work the kids have put into it. And it's Joseph and the Amazing Technicolor Dreamcoat. And the students are doing a really good job. That'll be on November 19th and 20th, so we're glad that's going to happen. Also, our annual Turkey Basket Community Service Project is starting up, and that is when students from South team up to bring in food items to put together Thanksgiving baskets of food to give to local families who are in need. And then last, our advisories do a pumpkin decorating contest every fall, and that went well. I think it's a fundraiser for the junior class, and it's, they do it in the advisory time, and they paint the pumpkins, because no carving in school. And they all turned out very well. They have, were things from, characters from movies to Donald Trump, so it was very amusing.
The Trump ones are good.
And, just lastly, Mrs. Fry wanted me to make sure I mentioned that the school Facebook and Twitter are updated often, and people should tune into those. They're a great source of information.
Very good. Thank you. Isabel from North?
Hi. So first, we'd like to congratulate Gianni Falconi on being in the cards due to his performance on both the golf and baseball teams. And he received a letter from Matthew Moritor, the state representative. We'd also like to congratulate our student athletes of the week, Jackie Sullivan, senior field hockey captain, Farsi starter, and Nick McNamee, who was the first D3 runner to finish last week's race at the Bay State XC meet. We'd also like to congratulate Cam Drew and Sam Curden, who were last week's athletes of the week. In Friday night's win over Silver Lake, Cam threw 171 yards and three touchdowns, and Sam Curden was a medalist in last week's Twilight Invitational. Last week, we had our student council, E-Board, go on a field trip to College of the Holy Cross to attend officer shop. So our president, vice president, secretary, liaisons, and publicity coordinator attended this, and they brought back a lot of good ideas to implement in our school, and it was a very fun field trip. Our French exchange students will be attending classes with their host students on Monday, November 9th to Friday, November 13th, and they'll also be in the classrooms Thursday, November 12th for the first block. We'd also like to welcome author and teacher Ralph Fletcher to the Plymouth Public Schools. So Mr. Fletcher will share tips and strategies for supporting and encouraging writers in today's classroom. This opportunity will be on Wednesday, November 4th, from 4:15 to 5:15 at the Plymouth North High School Lecture Hall. If you are interested in attending, we had asked you to register through the Smart PD by Friday, October 30th, because space is limited. Our senior class apparel has also arrived, so students can pick it up before and after school in room 331. We'd also like to congratulate Plymouth, both North and South, on being the Fox 25 Game of the Week. It was a very good game. It was probably one of the best games all season. We'd also like to congratulate our girls' cross-country team for winning the Patriot League Championship. We have the Student Council and Social Studies Department planning the Veterans Day assemblies, which will be Tuesday, November 10th, in the Performing Arts Studio. And our winter sports signups are Tuesday, November 10th at 2:15, and coaches in Clarence Knight are on Wednesday, November 18th.
Thank you.
Just to postscript to Veronica's presentation, the Plymouth South boys soccer team has drawn Brockton for its first playoff game in Brockton on Thursday night at 6 o'clock.
Good. Dr. Maestis, you want to add to that?
No.
Okay. Old business. Tonight, we had said that we were going to walk through this. Last few meetings, we kind of skirted over this quickly, so tonight, let's take the time and walk through them, see if we can close a few of them out. So the first one, will you, would you just walk through them, or do you want to jump to some?
Just walk right through them. Mine just popped up, so. We have, we reviewed these today in our office, and we do have some updates, so as we go down, we can give you some updates.
All right. Communities That Care Survey. Our last entry on this one was in April. Dr. Campbell indicated that the survey had been administered and that we are awaiting results in a month or two, depending on the research analysts. Mr. Begley indicated that he is looking for it before the end of the year. Hopefully, I didn't say it quite so sternly.
So were we. Yes. Thank you. It's been a challenge, to say the least, to get this. We had two different organizations working on it, one working on the data and one working on the report. Happy to report, though, that the reports, which will be actually in greater detail than we've received in the past, will be presented to us this Friday.
This Friday.
So we'll have this information, we'll have those reports on Friday. So we look forward to reviewing that and sharing that with this committee.
Next meeting? Or, no?
Well, I would say that our next meeting, our next, several meetings, the next three meetings are pretty booked. What I would say is, I think we'd like to have a chance to disaggregate the information, and then we can bring it to the school committee, the earliest possible scheduled opportunity.
Next one, topics for possible policy subcommittee review. I think we can close this one. Last talked about it back in April, and we suggested adding the food allergies, which we did. So I think we can safely close this one. Does everybody agree? Next one was the PSC advocacy prioritization, and we discussed this at the retreat, and we're doing some updates. A lot of them can be grouped. I think our big update will be when we get the kindergarten report.
That'll be a big one.
So I think that one also, I think we can close that, since we're tracking the other stuff under individual items, kind of over-tracking.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
So we'll close that guy out. Next was the local scholarship application process.
Yes, I provided a brief update.
Back on October 5th.
On October, but I have arranged for Mr. Butters and Dr. Halpin to come in front of the school committee during our next committee meeting to provide a detailed report on the changes that are going to be implemented into the scholarship process moving forward. So they will bring forward a detailed overview of the process, application, you know, writing, rubric, things of that nature, that you can get some information on. I think it addresses the topic pretty clearly.
Okay, great. Do we have, do we know anything more to, on the, adopting the FAFSA process?
They're, from my understanding, they're going to ask for it as part of the application process.
Okay. Good.
In addition to other frame-induced application information that we may have.
Right. Okay. Good. Dr. Sorenson, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
We should hold it on here as a business until it's finished.
Till we finish the agenda item.
I had a question. And so, at that time, when they come, will we get a report on what's going on with the Holmes-Talvanale Scholarship, maybe from the financial perspective of the town?
I think that's going to be a separate discovery feature of an agenda item, because we need to consult with the town to find out exactly how it's doing and its investment and what we're going to be able to predict. I think, you know, last year, they gave us some kind of a projection. We can bring that back to the table and, you know, put it back on the agenda to just discuss where the scholarship is as far as its ability to offer a scholarship this year.
That report has typically been in, like, January, so by April or, you know, March or April, when the applications are due, there's plenty of time.
Well, I'll bring something to the table, so that you're aware. We can consult with the town and figure out exactly where they are right now. Okay? Okay?
Okay. Let's leave that open. The next one was the summer exchange trip to Shishikahama, Japan. I think we can close that one. It was successful. And the next one was school committee communications. And the last entry, I put down, we should close this one also. Last entry was a pretty lengthy one. I don't know. Anybody have an opinion on this one?
Well, I think, I think we talked about it at the last meeting, too, that, I mean, a lot of this is done with the social media. That can be closed out. I think there is still, like, we're still waiting for, I mentioned, we're still waiting for bios from everybody, and like, the video that Dan Riley did for us is not on there yet.
And we have it down under 16 dot four, the committee webpages and everything, so it's kind of...
So some of it can come off, but some of it's still...
We kind of have it more than once here.
Yeah, we can.
So why don't we close it here and keep it open on the other one?
Yep. Yep. We need to...
Give the illusion of movement on that.
Shell game.
Yeah. All right. That one is closed. Incident tracking database.
Yes, I have an update for you. I have your login information in these envelopes, individual. Please take your name, and inside, there's a username and password, so you can have access to the database that sends important information to you when a high-level incident happens in the district. You can actually get on there and see from the beginning, when I started logging them, and you can actually download an Excel spreadsheet, and I know, Mr. Begley, you can, you will have a great time with that, so.
It's always been. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And you'll have follow-ups and resolutions, not just the event itself?
It's all there.
It's all there. Perfect.
You will enjoy the passwords that I've chosen for you. I know a little bit about y'all.
That's funny.
How you got my curiosity?
Yeah, I was going to say, me too.
So, so why don't we leave that open till the next meeting? We close it on the next meeting then, right? Once we go home, log in, give it a shot?
It's not changing the format it's in right now, so.
All right. National Council on School Safety and Security. I had marked in my notes, we could close that one out. We kind of discussed it a little bit. Our SRO program, I think, is pretty up to date. Dr. Sorenson, you were the one that brought that up. Do you feel that that one can be closed?
Okay.
Okay. That one can be closed. Then the next one is Board Docs versus the Electronic School Board. And on this one, we had, Dr. Sorenson noted that before returning as a member of the committee, Electronic School Board had been adopted. He expressed his belief that the next iteration is out and may be better. He mentioned seeing the Board Docs at a recent conference, and we just discussed it a little bit further. So, I don't think we took it, took this anywhere. We actually did a comparison. I started looking at them, the different, because now there's a few other companies out there, too. So, if you want, I could do a comparison of the products and do a write-up and provide that to Dr. Maestis and...
Costume, all that, yeah, implementation.
Then we could close it out once I, is everybody all right with that? I think it's just going to come down to cost, really. Although Board Docs is a lot slicker than what we use, it's because it costs a lot more.
We'll find out, right?
Yeah. It's like, all right. Next one, next one was one that I had assigned to me, and I have to say that I dropped the ball on this one. I hadn't, I hadn't seen it. So I saw it, I knew about it, and then completely forgot about it. So, I did my due diligence, and I did the research on it and everything. I reached out to, as everybody knows, it's not Eric Foley anymore as the athletic director, so it's Tom Angelo, and I reached out to them, asking for their input, but I also did quite a bit of research on where there's a problem. I couldn't find any other school districts complaining about it. That doesn't mean they're not. I just, I couldn't find any. And I looked at the spring sports, so in the main MIAA handbook, there's, the only reference that they make there for exceptions is with the SAT tests. They don't mention graduation at all. But then, with each sport that's listed for spring, they have a separate document, and only one of them, which was the baseball one, specifically said that, it specifically said that they don't, that it's, it's, it's a viable...
Excuse.
A viable excuse, thank you. That they'll never turn you down if there's a date conflict with graduation. But that's only in the baseball document. It wasn't in any of the other sports documents. Now, some of that could have been for scheduling, because I was roughly trying to look at the schedule for each one of the tournaments, and sometimes they overlap some of the time. So I was talking to Dr. Maestis, and he was saying the only sport that, in the past, was having trouble was track and field.
Track and field is what it...
And last year, that did actually land. I checked, double-checked it, and it actually, the state competition landed on the sixth, which was when the ceremony is...
It's always on the first...
So I was wondering, since I haven't drafted yet, I was wondering, the way I would like to draft it is ask if we could extend the wording that they use for the baseball to include all the sports, since you don't really have to make an argument that that's important, because they've already accepted that it's important, but they narrowly accepted it. I would like them to more broadly accept it. Does that, does that sound...
Yeah, but I've always thought the precedent was there, but school committees have not communicated with MIAA. But the precedent was established with baseball a long time ago. So I think that if school committees began to communicate with MIAA, that we think it's practically unconscionable for a student to miss their graduation because of a track meet, that we ought to move the group track meet to a, and not, and not the graduation. And I think, I think we ought to communicate that.
Okay.
Just, one of the dilemmas that you have is with baseball is, by division, there's two teams. So it's two teams. When you look at track and field, it probably impacts almost, it impacts a high number of schools, because there are so many sports, and there are so many kids that compete. So you probably have hundred, 115, 120 schools that are sending kids to the state meet. So with baseball, it's two teams per division. So I think, I think that's why it's such a hard time to...
Yeah.
To find a slot, you know?
Do we have any idea of how many schools schedule their graduation in the first week of June? Ours is going to be the fourth, right? I think. Right? Am I right?
Sure.
I think it's going to be the fourth. Calendars aren't my strong suit, so I believe it's the fourth.
That sounds right.
So...
It is the fourth.
Do we know if that's, the majority of school districts are in the first week? Because if we could say something like that, that would add a little bit of weight. Otherwise, they're just going to say stuff.
And I think, if you don't mind my, years ago, when I was principal at Wemben Hansen, we always ran into this, and this is, we had my valedictorian had to make a decision. He clearly chose graduation. But I think what it speaks to is, they've been dealing with this for years and years and years, the MIA. They've tried everything that they possibly can. You've run out of dates, these other, this is the creme de la creme of the kids. This isn't every child involved at this point, because those meets are all over. No matter what day you pick, you're going to run into this, because there is a lot of schools that'll graduate the weekend before, and so if they picked that, they're going to run into that. We ended up choosing, we were able to do it, Plymouth couldn't do that, we chose graduation on a Friday night for that reason. Plymouth can't do that with two high schools. I understand that, but that's why we ended up doing that. So they've been dealing with it, I, no disrespect, but I think you're going to have an argument that it's been had so many times. They have tried everything. I'm on, actually on the tournament management committee for the MIA.
Bingo.
Then may I ask you this question?
They've tried everything that you can think of.
I recognize that that's always, that's always the response from MIA. If we, if we don't do it on this Saturday, then these schools will be affected. If we do it next week, then those schools, but nobody graduates the last weekend in May.
That's incorrect.
How about the weekend before that? I mean, could not, could not the season, could not the season be adjusted?
You can't, because now you, how long can you back up into March?
I'm not saying back up short in the season.
They have to do so many events.
They, I realize what you're saying. They have to, they have to, they have to, but sometimes you come across a roadblock, and the roadblock is, I guess we can't do all of these events, because we don't want to step on high school graduations. Perhaps we should have, we should restructure the season in such a way that we can have our tournament participants decided with a shorter, with a shorter amount of competitions. I mean, there are ways, if you really want to sit down and do it, you can do it. I don't mean you can do it, or I can do it, but somebody can do it.
I think they've tried to, I'm not saying that, you know, I don't disagree, Dr. Sorenson, but I think sacrifices would have to be made, and people aren't willing to make those.
There you have it.
Not the MIA. I don't think it's even the MIA. I think it's the coaches. There's a committee that meets for each sport. I don't think they're willing to. Then there was a discussion at one point years ago about putting it during the week. Well, now we're going to pull kids out of school to do this competition, just so we don't interfere with the graduation? That wasn't something that was palatable to a lot of people either.
Those seniors aren't in school.
But these aren't all seniors that participate in that. The graduation ones, I understand, but there's a lot of other kids that aren't seniors that participate in this, on those, the finals. It's an awful situation. It has been for years.
My final point is, I do believe that we need to go on record with the MIAA. They can take our letter and say, sorry, bud, we can't fix this, but I think we should go on record.
Okay. So I'm going to do that, but I am going to stress the wording they already have in baseball, and I did find it. I couldn't find it before. It says, adjustments of dates, location of games. This is under the baseball-specific document. Says, the principal of a school who has a special function or functions which conflicts with the tournament may make a scheduling adjustment request to the tournament director. In all cases, graduation conflicts will be honored. So I think that's how I'm going to couch it, and just say, the argument, I think the argument coming back is going to be the exceptions. But to that, none of the other sports, so track and field is difficult for scheduling purposes, but none of the track and, none of the other sports made a strong statement about, they all make a strong statement about the SATs, but they don't make a strong statement, except for baseball, about the graduation ceremony.
But I think softball also does it. I just don't think they've made the, you know, they'll always work around the graduation, because again, you're dealing with two specific teams that they, there's no way they can't usually adjust. You can play that during the week, you're only dealing with two teams.
Right.
They can play that at night. So softball, I know, has been always able to work around graduations also.
They just didn't put it in their document.
They didn't put it, but I don't think they've ever needed to.
And volleyball, tennis, lacrosse, et cetera.
Those will all be in the winter anyway, or it's the fall.
Do they have graduations on Sundays?
Lacrosse.
They're on the spring.
Boys volleyball, yeah. Boys volleyball is spring, right?
So anyway, that's, so that's, yes.
Are there any school, are there any school districts that have their graduation on Sundays?
Mm-hmm. They do. Some do.
Wareham has it Friday night, don't they?
MASK from Massachusetts Association of School Committees? Of, just, I'd be interested now to know, demographically, where do the school districts land for a graduation date? Because if it turns out that they're all, you know, around that weekend, push it further into June, you know, push the, then I guess they start competing with vacations and things like that, and, but then, you know, then people have to pick what's more important to them. All right. So my miss on that one, I'll fix it. Next one was the kindergarten placement notifications. I think we can close this out?
Yep.
No?
It's not really done yet. That's just my opinion.
Leave it open.
I mean, it will, yeah. Well, it will be, I mean, potentially what happens next, the 29th. Isn't that the 30th? Whenever, whenever that next, the meeting is about kindergarten.
Oh, for the full-day kindergarten discussion.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean...
But either way, this has to do for notification of...
Yeah. So, yeah. We can leave it open, but either way.
Okay. So we're going to leave that one open. And we'll just revisit it in a few weeks. School supply lists, this is relatively new. What I wanted out of this was, what's the action we're expecting? We don't have it kind of worded. So in other words, what, it's on, it's on the open business list. What's the thing, what's the action we're looking to do here?
To have a list published, like, as school lets out, generically.
Publish list at the beginning, supply list, right? At the beginning of the summer.
For as many grades as possible. I think we focused on high school.
On the reading list.
Right. Okay, I think...
That was my understanding as well. So we want, and we've had some internal discussion about this already, about both the quantity of the supply lists and also the timeliness of those communications, so that families and students can be well-prepared and not rushing when, when the stores are all, you know, run out of those binders, as we all know.
Are the mics working? Your eye needs to install. My hearing, I don't have mine.
It wasn't installed. It must work.
Was his mic working then? Yeah? All right. Nevermind.
Didn't sound like it's...
It's my ear.
Free now. Thank you.
I didn't hear it either. Make you feel any better?
A little better. Family emergency contacts paperwork. Do we have an update or anything on that one?
I don't.
Relatively new. Committee webpages, we talked about earlier when we closed out the other one. It's kind of a duplicate. It was a duplicate. The Plymouth North High School Football Field Sound System. I think your last entry on 10/19, the last update, gave us enough information to close this out.
I was on the field on Friday on the other side. I mean, it sounded... I was on the field on Friday on the other side. I mean, it sounded across the way. It sounded fine. So I think they resolved the, I think they've resolved the issue.
Button was off.
It's a lot of feedback on it, so.
So we can close that guy out. Plymouth North campus traffic, that just came up the last two meetings ago or so. So we want to keep that. We're looking into, so.
Speed bumps. We're looking into speed bumps and others.
There's an update on that.
Ah, you have an update. Good.
Speed bumps have, have been ordered. And, and they're going to be installed. So I don't have a timeline on that, but as soon as they get in, we'll get them in. Okay?
Fantastic.
They're removable?
Yeah.
Oh, it's like those rubber ones?
Yeah.
They have them at Manham Elementary, those kind.
Yep.
Thank you.
They're about three feet high, so it'll be a little bit of a challenge.
I almost just spit my coffee out.
For the track team?
Yeah.
Hurdles. Hurdles for the track team.
Recycling. We have an update on recycling.
I'm hearing crickets. Recycling is, is, I mentioned it last meeting, it is a very difficult topic because there are some things beyond our control that we probably need to discuss at our retreat to kind of figure out how we manage the collection of recyclables. Paper is not an issue. It's plastics, which is a big issue for us. So it's something that we, we can discuss. But it, it deserves a conversation.
So we'll make that one an agenda item?
I would suggest that.
Obviously, down the road. And what about the food recycling? Remember a few years ago, we had the bad experience? We had great experience with a local pig farm up until the terrible Columbus Day weekend.
Yeah, South Elementary.
But, but everything was going smoothly up till then. So I always felt we kind of threw the baby out with the bath water on that one. Rather than finding, well, how do we avoid that happening again and, and, and recycling that food? Well, not recycling, but you know what I mean, right? Giving it to the pigs. Rather than just throwing it into a dump somewhere.
We're not allowed to store it anymore, so.
You can't store it, right? No, we have to get rid of it. But we used to get rid of it by giving it to the.
Yeah, once a week. That's a problem.
It was the holiday weekend that messed us up.
Yeah.
So if we couldn't make that part of the thing we're looking at, is just general recycling?
Yeah, I, I, there is a recycling committee here in Plymouth. I've been to many, many meetings. You know, it, it's a challenge for our community, especially within the town and, and school departments. But I would love to see some movement on this. And, and I think we can strategize on how we can, can help. You know, when the kids come forward and say they'd like to see recycling, I, I think that's telling us maybe we, we, we should do something. We, we've had them come before. Years ago, we had students come to school committee, you know, five, six, seven, eight years ago, and we're still in the same place we are. We, we do collect paper. We have a, a number of teachers in the district that have taken upon themselves to collect recyclables and take them to the transfer station on their own on the weekends just to help. But, I mean, it, it's, it's not uniform.
And are there any collective bargaining? That was what stopped us the last time, I believe. Oh, I just made Dr. Gould wins over there.
Oh, I was just blinking, sorry.
Are there, are there still collective bargaining issues around the removal of the, and who does the removing and?
As recently as last week.
Enough said. I, I just wanted to know what was the, you know, thing. So that obviously stays open. Okay, joint school committee and school council meetings, we discussed this and didn't go the way I want it, but.
Can't have everything.
You can't have everything. The only correction on this is it was by Mrs. Betts. In the note there, it says, suggestion by Ms. It, it was Mrs. Betts. And so we want to leave it open until then or?
Till it happens.
Till it happens, all right. God bless you. We got through the list. Yep, yep.
Can I, I just, one of the items we took off of the list about the SROs, I wanted to, there were a number of questions in that item that we took off. And there's one question that I think is really important, particularly in light of the publicity that's occurred across the nation, is are the SROs up to date on the IEPs of students with behavior problems? And if they're not, they should be. And, and ought to be. They need to read those IEPs so they know that a particular child has a particular disability that may show in their behavior that the SRO must be aware of. I have had the opportunity to talk to at least one SRO, not in this school district, privately and personally asking that question. And the answer I got was I don't have time to read them. I hope that's not happening in our school system.
Dr. Sorensen, I, I do not have a answer for you regarding the frequency of how our SROs review IEPs. They do have access to them. And we've made sure that they have access to them. What I can do is inquire the frequency of how they review, what they review, and I can get back to the committee.
May, may I suggest that they don't have to read all the IEPs, but if there is a student and they have explosive intermittent behavior, or if they have oppositional behavior, or defiant behavior, at least those need to be read. If it's an ADD child or a math disability, there's no point in reading those.
Yeah, just sort of to elaborate on that, I think it's a, and we can have a conversation, I think, with our director of special education on this. As a former special ed director, it's important that those adults that work with our most disabled population, particularly certain, certain disabilities are aware of the challenges those students may face. And I think it's a good idea that we could do some, some sensitivity training in, in regards to that. So I'll bring that up to the director of special education. We can also have a conversation about this at our next safety committee meeting, which the SROs are a part of as well.
Do we have any privacy issues with that one?
Not when you do it in more general terms, for sure. You know, a lot of districts have done sensitivity training around working and addressing students that may be on the autistic spectrum. Or, you know, certain disabilities that may present in a certain way, just to, to make sure that, you know, in this case, that our SROs are sensitive to the disability types. But they're, they're employees, they're, they work within, within our school and they do interact with our students. So, you know, there's information that is, you know, relevant.
The language that I remember is within the institution with a need to know, there are no issues of privacy. If you are within the institution and you have a need to know, you are allowed to know.
Thank you. Well, that was, knocked off a few of them, right? Okay, good. Now, I'm almost afraid to ask since we just whittled down the list, but is there any new business? Yes.
I mean, I've already talked to you about this one, but I've talked to Mr. Bagley about the fact that the Pilgrim Area Collaborative has moved their meetings to the last Thursday of every month, I mean, the last Wednesday instead of the last Thursday. And so that conflicts with the Plymouth North High School. I'm their school rep, so I just wanted to make sure everyone was okay. If I just keep with the Pilgrim Area Collaborative, since I'm appointed to that via letter from the district, and then Mr. Bagley take over for Plymouth North.
I, I would pick up the, I could cover her meetings for that. That kind of breaks with tradition a little bit, but we talked about it the last time to try to make the schedule load work a little better. It seems silly that, there must have been a good reason for it years ago. You guys could share with us maybe, but it just seems logistically with everybody's schedule, you can't have one person without liaison assignments. So I don't mind doing it.
And I think what might be helpful in the long run is to, in that list of, I know that some schools change their meeting date every year, but usually in the beginning of the year, you know all the dates. So it'd be helpful to, when making the assignments, to look and be like, okay, these meet on the Wednesday, this meets on a Thursday, that way. Just adding into that spreadsheet so we'd all kind of know if there was going to be a conflict ahead of time.
What prompted the PAC to change their meeting?
I wasn't, I wasn't able to attend the meeting that they, I went to Plymouth North's first meeting and then they changed the dates. And I think it had every, just to do with making sure they had attendance. We had everybody at the last meeting, so. Clearly it worked.
So when is the next meeting for the school council?
For school council is.
Oh, it's just the first one? Oh, good.
No, this is the, for, for North. It is, I have it.
It's all right, it's all right. It's not, I don't need it now. I just thought.
I don't think it's till like the thirteenth of December. Did they just give it because it falls in?
I don't think I have it in my calendar yet.
Oh, I can't do it that night.
Already have a conflict? I can go to that one because they moved the date.
December thirteenth is a Sunday.
Okay. It's December something.
No, it's all right.
I'll find it.
Yeah, because they're meeting here this month.
Yeah.
George, out there. Our next school committee meeting is there.
There, yeah. No.
They're not meeting before that? I mean, you know, before we start?
I don't think so.
Reports and proposals from the superintendent.
Wrong, sorry.
Yesterday night, I have a few items to report on. I know some of you were at the technical studies advisory dinner last week and that was well-attended, a great opportunity for our advisory guests to come in and, and learn a little bit more about our programs. I think the, the two guest speakers did a fantastic job and it was a great option to, to see, to see what they are, are up to and that they have really used their experiences in the technical studies program to enhance their, their futures. That was excellent. MASC is from Wednesday to Friday. I'll see some of you there. And just keep in mind that Mr. Costin is presenting at one o'clock on Wednesday. And he will be presenting on the, the solar model that we've used here in our district and sharing that with school committees from around the state. Reminder, on November thirtieth, we will be presenting recommendations on the full-day K, full-day kindergarten program. In addition, I would like to see if it's possible maybe to add a couple of other items on the thirtieth agenda because we, maybe a couple of small presentations, because we're, we have quite a few items on our backlog and I'd like to see if we can maybe have more than just the full-day K presentation on that night. So maybe add a couple more.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay, all right.
It's okay with me. Is it all right with everybody else?
I suppose.
I suppose.
Can, keep in mind. Well, it, I think it'll avoid having a very, very late meeting on the sixteenth. The sixteenth meeting is, I think, has three presentations slated. So we'll have quite a bit of information. The school committee meeting on the sixteenth is going to be at North High School. And we're going to do a tour of Mount Pleasant at six o'clock. So we'll meet at Mount Pleasant. We have not had an opportunity to, to tour Mount Pleasant. We have made a commitment to try to highlight Mount Pleasant and get in there. And you can take a look at the school. We'll start at six, then we'll, I was thinking about walking from north and then walking out. I said, nah, it probably won't be a good thing. So we'll meet at nor, at the Mount Pleasant and we'll drive over to north. We're going to have the school committee meeting in the library. Okay, so it'll be set up. Nan and I'll be there later this week to kind of configure that with Dan and, and get this set up. The last thing that I have, I have to tell you that I'm very, very proud of our, our band. When I got that, when I got that text last night, I, I was, I, I almost wanted to call the fire chief to get fire trucks when they drove back into town, but we would have had some people that were probably not too happy with this at eleven o'clock at night. I'm not sure, what time did you guys get in?
Nine thirty.
Nine thirty, yeah, a little late. But I'm very, very proud. Our, our program has, has come a long way. The dedication of, of the students. We had a strategic planning meeting last week at North and it was in the thirties. And you're all practicing and, you know, it was, it must have been nine o'clock when you're out there. So all that hard work is paying off. So continue. Share our, share my thoughts with the rest of the band and we're very proud and we know it takes a lot of dedication, staff and student alike. So, good job.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Retirement, Dr. Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Bagley. We have three to announce this evening. We have Donna Barrows, cafeteria worker at Plymouth North High School. Retired October twenty-third after twenty years of service in the district. Sheila Mills, main office secretary at Plymouth South Middle School, will retire December thirty-first after twenty-one years of service. And Roberta Sullivan, a hundred and eighty-day custodial floater at Plymouth South High School, will also be on December thirty-first after twenty-seven years. It's going to be a loss there for them, so.
On behalf of the Plymouth School Committee, I'd like to thank these three individuals for their combined sixty-eight years of service to the district and wish them a happy retirement.
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Badger. Ms. Hunt, correspondence.
There's one piece of correspondence tonight, a letter to Dr. Maestis commending the staff of Plymouth North's Project Growth Program. Beth Israel Deaconess Plymouth Hospital volunteer of twenty years, Anna Lawrence, wrote high praise for the wonderful job the staff is doing with the students as they bring to volunteer, the students they bring to volunteer at the hospital. She emphasized the difference in the students from when they started volun, when she started volunteering to the present.
Very good. Thank you.
Mr. Morgan has.
Mr. Morgan.
Just to piggyback on our previous conversation, the next Plymouth North High School school council meeting is Wednesday, December second.
December second, thank you.
I'm the other member. I was there at the last meeting.
Good. Thank you.
There it is.
You can send me any minutes or anything that they sent you. That'd be good.
What's that?
She sends it by mail. You'll get it by mail.
She sends it by email?
She does. No, like snail mail. You'll get it.
Oh, okay. Okay, now we have our first program update. Dr. Maestis.
Yes, tonight, we have a program update from Dr. Babini on the social studies department. And she's here to present her yearly update to the committee. You're welcome.
Good evening.
Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity to update you on social studies program and the work of a very dedicated and exceptional staff. We have, let's see if this is going to work. It never does. Oh, there we go. Okay. Our department focuses last year, first, the first two items, the document-based questions and the common assessments are ones that were on our program update last year. And just kind of what we've done is, worked within the high school and the middle school that last year on creating document-based questions so that students have a common experience that there was a pool of questions developed. Both of that in the common assessments at various grade levels from sixth grade up have given us the opportunity to collect data, to revive, review our program and to monitor student growth. So we're continuing to work on those questions. The document-based questions really are hand-in-hand with the PARC exam because they really support that in the terms of reading for evidence and being able to interpret documents. So the work done by our staff really has been able to enhance that program as well. We continue to, we continue to work on instructional strategies. We began last year and will continue this year, especially focusing on the longer block at the high school and what type of instructional activities teachers have been trying out, different things, and sharing them in department meetings and in services to be able to enhance the, the lessons and work with the longer periods. And again, at the middle school, we're focusing on brain-based activities and how to get kids engaged and hooked and be able to share those. So our curriculum's pretty much in place and in line, so we're working now on the, the instructional strategies to present that. Our elective program has grown. This past year, we have now added three new electives. One is Irish history, one is Civil War leadership, and the other is on citizenship. So those are very well subscribed. We're continuing to grow that program and give students at the high school now where they have more opportunities for electives to be able to grow and enrich that program. The, working well with the elementary schools, again, looking for that vertical alignment between the elementary programs and the highs, the middle school and the high school program so that there is that kind of connection and thread going through the programs, not only content-wise, but instructional strategies and knowing from one grade level to the next, what sort of thing we're looking for for students. in terms of historical thinking and social study skills that they'll be able to bring with them. And we continue to monitor and enhance service learning projects within the department. Our goal is citizenship and helping kids become active members of society. And part of that is part, being part of service learning programs. Let you know what some of our teachers do during the summer. AP Summer Institutes, we had three teachers attend AP Summer Institutes this summer. Mr. Clark, Mr. Pila attended the AP Euro, and Mr. Bruno attended AP World. We also had a teacher who was an AP Psych Reader, Allison Shaver from South, was able to be part of that program. And one of our teachers, Mr. Powers, applied and was accepted to the National Endowments for the Arts, a program on industrialization that took place in Springfield. And National Endowments for the Arts are competitive nationwide programs. Where teachers apply to be part of those summer institutes. So this was the second one that Pat had applied, has been part of. So it's a great experience that he can bring back to his classroom. Working now at the Library of Congress, there's a collaborative out in Western Mass, and they are an arm of the Library of Congress. So they have a program on using primary sources. And we're looking to bring them through the social supervisors group of hosting that in Plymouth. And sometime after the first of the year in the spring to offer teachers a professional development opportunity that's tied in with the resources of the Library of Congress. And I'm planning an elementary workshop, again, for elementary teachers on incorporating social studies more with literature and with literacy, and how we can incorporate that into the, into their workday to make sure that social studies is having a voice there and how that's integrated. Kids voting, it's not too early to start thinking. We're already getting ready. Next year's actually, will be 20 years that Plymouth has been involved. We started in 1997 when Mr. Haskell brought this to the district. So this is our, will be our 20th year being part of it. We started with our fundraising, so I finished a grant a couple of weeks ago to be able to defund that program. One of the things we're looking at, we have in the past, is very successful, is adopt a precinct. So we have businesses which host a precinct, and we're working, again, with the PTAs from the various schools, because we have 15 precincts to cover all day that day. So we're looking for precinct captains who will take the responsibility of getting the volunteers to work all day in the polls. We ran a very successful bookmark contest last time. It was funded by AD Makepeace, Neighborhood Grand Fund. Elementary students, we had five different designs for bookmarks, and those were then made and distributed through the public library as well as the elementary schools. So we'll be running that again, again, based on how much fundraising we are good at, which isn't really my strength. I'm really good at bookmarks, but... And last year, in the last several years, we've done posters, had kids make posters, ask, encouraging people to get out and vote. And we hung those around town, at the mall, and we'll be doing that again, just to give kids that incentive to look for getting people excited about the election. Because Election Day is off, that's when we're off to the polls. Kids will be going to their precincts with their parents to vote that day. And we will again be keeping records and collecting the data at the polls, which schools students come from, and the school with the highest percentage of voters is awarded the Phyllis Hughes Trophy. And they'll have that trophy until the next election. I believe it's currently residing at West School, if I recall correctly. We continue with social studies. Our push is making local connections. 9/11 Patriot Day, our secondary buildings ran a drive for the troops, and we were so successful, we were able to not only send boxes to the VFW for their mailing, we brought a number of boxes to our food pantry. And a lot of those items were distributed through many of the different social service organizations that are used by the food pantry. The class of 2020 are now eighth graders. They have just completed their eighth project, which was on the Mayflower Compact. And those will again be filed next summer by, we have Susan Page and Judy Foster, two retired Lindenberg teachers who come in every summer faithfully and file student projects away. The students are also, we just completed the Voice of Democracy and the Patriot Pen Programs. Veterans Day Programs, you'll be hearing about Plymouth North's program coming up. And a number of the buildings do rather, I know South Middle School has a program, and Manomet, all centered around Veterans Day. The class of 2020 has also been invited to write essays for the illuminate program this year through the 400th. Students are asked to choose someone who illuminates their life, and a winner will be chosen, and that student will be able, will be on the grandstand for the illuminate ceremony, as well as a number of students who enter are going to have their name entered in a contest for a drawing to be part of the parade on, this year's Thanksgiving Day Parade, and to be with the 400th float there as well. The ceremonial Thanksgiving meeting of the selectmen, we've been invited to be part of that again. Every year, we've had it for the last several years, and the students from West Elementary will be part of it, reading a poem on Thanksgiving. We will have middle school students, one from PCIS, one from South Middle, who will read two short poems, one of Wampanoag Voice and one of Pilgrim Voice. And then students from the high school will be singing the National Anthem as well as God Bless America. So it's a very nice ceremony that the selectmen run and invite us to be part of. And the forefathers' essay has just gone out, and that's from students from grades 10 to 12. To be part of that, they're invited to the forefathers' dinner and are able to bring their family, and they receive a prize as part of that. Adopt an Artifact will be run again this year with the Pilgrims, Pilgrim Hall. We're fifth graders, this year will be South Middle School students. Will go on a field trip, they'll adopt an artifact and create it, and it'll be on display in the, in the library there. And one other project that I just, I neglected put on there, we were speaking about it today, is the Civic Bee, the League of Women Voters, held their first Civic Bee last spring, excuse me, at the Spire. There were, I believe, five or six schools represented from the area. Plymouth North came in first, they're seniors. And Plymouth South came in third, they're a group of sophomores. So they're very excited to reapply and be part of it. And this year's focus is going to be on elections. Other social studies connections, the Model UN, and that's why I believe my, you may hear more about that this evening. Student Government Day, again, representatives from each school attended Student Government Day last year, and was very successful in Boston. And we have teachers, Ms. Osberg at South and Mrs. Goldberg at North, will be bringing students to that. Again, the Geography Bee that 7th grade runs, we again had a student this year, this past year from PCIS that was part of the Bee. And this year's Bee will be held in this building after the first of the year. The Geography Fair, this year's theme is exploring maps and the stories they tell. And again, 7th graders will be, and all grade levels will be invited to be part of it. But the 7th grade is the one that really kind of anchors that, which will be at Bridgewater State in April. Field trips, a number of field trips. We are in a wonderful area for that. We're best to teach social studies than in Plymouth and in the Boston area. So teachers have gone into the JFK, group went out to the State House last, last week into Boston, as well as the walking tours of Plymouth, and really getting our kids out to having authentic experiences, being able to be part of the community and the things they were able to bring back. And I always like to end with a note, a commercial. So this Sunday, November 8th, at Plymouth North High School, from 10:00 to 1:00, will be Step Up for Veterans. It's being run by the Interact Clubs of both North and South. PCIS has a club, the 7th Grade Senators are going to be there selling pins. The high school at North is, Interact Clubs also has luminary bags. Every elementary school has submitted cards for the veterans. We will be distributing those at the walk, as well as at the veterans' programs throughout the school and in the community. So it's a real opportunity for people to go to Plymouth North, walk around the indoor track, make a donation, and that all those funds go to our local veterans' programs here, to our veterans' agents here in Plymouth. So that's where we are in social studies. We continue to prepare citizens, and that's our task and our job. And I am very fortunate to have a very strong, stable staff that has taken up that mission and does it very well. Any questions on, if I can answer?
Anybody have any questions for Dr. Babini?
Great stuff.
Awesome.
On the, on the kids voting, do we do anything where we are trying to encourage local government, knowledge of local government, and?
Absolutely. Part of the program is looking at, part of our curriculum all along is looking at how government is structured at the federal, the state and the local level. So we bring that, a lot of speakers have come in during that, during those opportunities. We try and schedule a speaker into every building, so kids can talk about, people can talk with kids about what it is to run for an office and the responsibilities for, for being in office, to be in elective office. So even though the, the knowledge, that, that content is throughout our curriculum all the time, when we really sit with our kids voting and start to doing some scheduling, we absolutely look for speakers of, many of our local, people have been into schools. Michelle, you can come in, I remember you were at South last time. Right, South Elementary, so we will be putting out invitations for folks and their availability to go, so that every school gets a speaker in talking to at least one grade level.
And when you say you take them around to the precincts, do you take them to like the precinct chair meeting, for example? So they can meet with all the chairs from all the precincts?
We haven't, we haven't done that in the past, but it might be something that we can look into as we start our planning on logistics on, on different groups. We have our new citizenship class at the high school, and some of those kids have been out attending different meetings and that. So especially maybe with the, the town meeting coming up, the fall town meeting would probably be a perfect opportunity for kids to start being part of that.
That would be great. I mean, since, since I moved here, I mean, a lot of people are native to here, been here their whole life, but since I've moved here, I always thought the town meeting would be much better attended. And it seems to me like it's a missed opportunity for our kids to, it's during the day, and, you know, get there and, and see it being interacted. And if they were familiar with the articles and the article process, taking them to the precincts and they can follow it from the caucuses right to the town meeting and?
Right, that's a great idea. Yes, we'll definitely look at some of the things that are coming up, because there are a lot of issues that, that kids, that directly affect them. So I think it'd be a good opportunity for them to see how it works and how it works way through, through the process.
Very good. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Next, we have the two out-of-state field trips. Dr. Maestis.
Yes, tonight we have the two Model UN field trips, Plymouth South High, Plymouth North High. These are field trips that we send every year. This is a three-year refresh, and tonight we have our two staff members here that are ready to present. If you have, or Ashley, if you have any questions. I know this is a traditional three-year refresh of a field trip, but these are our Model UN trip, which is outstanding, so.
Yeah, I'm Dave Clark, and this is Karen Spinelli. We're the advisors to the Model United Nations Clubs at Plymouth South and Plymouth North. And so we're, we're here to ask your approval to each bring a group of kids to the National Model United Nations Conference, which is held in New York City from March 2nd through the 5th this year. This is actually my 21st year bringing a group of kids to New York City. And I think it was done 15 years even prior to me. So for almost 40 years, we've been taking a group of kids to New York City. The, the Model UN, you've probably all heard it before, but it's exactly what it says it is. It's a simulation of the real United Nations. The kids are all appointed a country and a committee and topics. And these, these are real international topics that they are discussing using parliamentary procedure. They need to do country research, they need to do position papers. There's a lot of, you know, research and writing involved in the club. They need to learn parliamentary procedure. And when they get to the conference, they interact with kids from all over the world and all over the country, which is probably one of the more special parts of it. And I really think it's a beneficial and worthwhile thing for these kids to continue to do. And there is an opportunity for financial assistance. They could apply to the conference itself. They apply, they, they award financial assistance. And we're fortunate enough to get generous donation from the VFW, which often helps certain students that might be in a position where the cost is difficult for them. Anything to add?
Sure, we're, our students have had a wonderful time. It's been remarkable. They have established friendships that have lasted with students from around the world, not just around the country, but this is attended by students from Italy, Austria, China, many other countries. And they really have a great time. They learn so much. The topics, as Mr. Clark said, the topics are real-world problems that they discuss and eventually bring to resolution. The goal in each committee is to come up with a resolution. And, and the adults really step back. You know, we're, we're there in the rooms, we walk around in each room and check in on them. But for the most part, the programs are run by college students. And the high school students are really solving the problems themselves. They're, they're finding each other and discussing with each other what they think needs to be talked about when they see representatives from one country present an issue, and they think they want to get behind that, they can, you know, send notes to each other, and they meet up with each other in the hallway during breaks. And it's a really wonderful experience for them to be able to, to really solve problems.
Very good. Any, any questions? Anybody have any questions? Dr. Sorenson?
I didn't have my calendar. Is this March?
March, March 2nd through 5th.
2nd to the 5th, what, is that a weekend?
It's Wednesday.
Wednesday through Saturday.
Wednesday through Saturday?
Yeah.
Okay. And that's the 2nd, the 3rd, and the 4th, so it's three nights at the Hilton?
Yes.
That's correct.
Okay. Do you know how many students are going?
I have eight.
I have 20.
20.
Yeah.
A couple of questions, and I, and I want to apologize upfront if my questions seem unfriendly. I don't mean them to be unfriendly, but I can't think of any way of asking them. I noticed the cost is $650. Has that cost escalated over the years?
Yes.
Manhattan's getting extremely expensive.
Very expensive. The Hilton is very expensive.
Right.
When I started, I think it was about around $450.
Yeah, I'm really glad to hear that students who cannot afford it, there'll be some, hopefully some monies for the 28 students. But I also noticed that the chaperones don't have to pay anything.
No.
I was just wondering why that is.
Because we're, it's a tremendous amount of work that we're putting into. And to, it just wouldn't be feasible. I mean, I'm, I'm not in a position to be able to afford that.
Three nights in Manhattan, who is? But, and I may be out of line, and please tell me if I am, but I always think that if the chaperones paid something, the students' prices would be a little bit less. And after all, the chaperones, I don't mean you two sitting here, but in any field trip, chaperones are also on the payroll while they're there, because they're during the school year, during the school day. So on one hand, we're on the payroll, and on the second hand, we're getting the trip for free. If I'm out of line, please tell me.
No, but I think Dr. Maestis wants to say.
Yeah, I think one of the issues that we run into is it goes well beyond the school days for us to responsibility. So not only do they do the, the normal school day hours, but they go on till 10, 11 o'clock at night for three nights in a row. And I, and then they give up a day on a, on a weekend. So I, I don't know how else to, to look at how we could make it more sustainable and affordable. But I think that's, that's one of the reasons why.
And just a note about the schedule, the, the students are in session until 11 o'clock at night.
Okay, actually, I really appreciate that answer. I really do appreciate that answer. Thank you.
Yep, oh, good.
I just had a comment.
Ms. Betts first?
I had a comment towards that, though, but the chaperones for like, I know with the band, when they go to like New York, the chaperones have to pay. As parent chaperones, not, I don't know if the staff chaperone, but parents' chaperones, I think we paid half. When I was a chaperone on a New York trip with the marching band, we paid a half price. So chaperones do pay.
Ms. Hunt?
I was going to ask, too, if, if maybe in the past they've had a problem getting chaperones, and then that could be one of the reasons as well.
Yeah, it's not, I mean, it's, it's not something that people are jumping up and down to do. It's a lot of work, and it's a lot of responsibility.
Is it just staff, or is it parents, too?
Just staff.
Staff.
Ms. Hunt?
I also made a note on, on the cost, too, because when you look at, you know, like the, out-of-the-country field trips are $1,500 or $2,000, and you're looking at $650 for three days. I know one of the things that the kids that went to Shishakahama did is they wrote individual grants to the educational foundation. So that might be a suggestion. I think for the mini-grants, they can get up to $700.
Yeah, we do have a mini-grant in the works. Is that correct? Yeah, I know I provided.
Because it is, I mean, for a three-day trip, it is, I mean, I'm thinking, I would love my kids to go, but I don't know if I could afford it myself, you know?
This summer, I applied for a grant, so we're waiting to hear on that, that would be a grant for it. So we, we've been trying different avenues to be able to lower that price. But in terms of, if you think back to like the DC trip we had for several years, the, again, when you work with these companies, the, the chaperones, they're, they're not charged as part of it, because they are working as part of that trip. The trips aren't part- they're, they're not charged as part of it, um, because they are working as part of that trip. The trips aren't possible without them. So if anytime, any of the organizations that you look at, because it's not just in terms of the, um, the travel and the hotel, but it's also the running of the programs and the materials and the training and all of that, that, that's kind of wrapped, wrapped into that price. So the, the shep, when you get these, um, programs, the, the cost is per student. And the, the caveat is that, but you'll send your chaperones so that are, the, they can't, they can't run that model UN program if teachers don't go and be part of it. So in order to get it to run, that's why teachers, um, or the DC trip, you know, any of these trips that have run out of, out of state always need to have, um, trained teachers with them. And they, again, they want the teachers who know the kids to be part of it. So.
Just while you're sitting here, it's a little off.
Oh.
I, I know that when I was, a long time ago, um, we used to do model UN and we used to do model Congress as well. And I know model Congress ended with a scholarship for whoever the winner was through whatever college sponsored it. Do they still do model Congress as well?
I know there are, there are some in the area. Um, and there's models.
AIC used to do it.
Yeah, there's model senate out of, out of, um, uh, Norton, I believe was running it. Nice Bridgewater is running a model UN. So we've looked at those different programs, but, um, again, it's, it's trying to get enough kids to fill all the different programs and that. But the, the model of the UN one is just one that is, you know, as Mr. Clark said.
Just a one, one time a year. Cause I think model Congress went on throughout the whole year.
There's a number of them different. So we, we kind of look at these different programs, see which one kind of fits into what we're doing and which ones have been successful and the kids are, um, clearly are signing up to go.
I think it sounds like a great idea. It's just a lot of money.
Amazing experience.
Mr. Morgan?
I just had a quick question on the 650 fee. Does that include lodging, lodging transportation, lodging, transportation and meals? Just to get an idea.
It's the, it includes the conference fee, the lo- the lodging, the hotel for the three nights and, um, the transportation. We take a chartered bus there.
But not the food?
Not the meals, no. They were encouraged to bring their own kind of food and they do, quite a bit of it.
It's a long bus ride.
Okay. So this is an action item. If there's no further questions, I'll ask for a motion.
I'm to approve the model, um, I was just gonna say model Congress, what I did when I was in school, model UN field trip.
You did too?
Yes, I did.
Seconded by Mrs. Burgess. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Was it to AIC?
That was an in favor, right?
Yes. I, I was, my question was, were we taking them both combined or individual?
So there was, uh, uh, okay. I thought there was a question the way you, you went up fast there. We're taking them together. You want them separate?
It's the same field trip.
I already submitted the vote, so.
It's the same bus. It's the same everything.
Same bus. One bus.
One bus, that's fine.
One bus.
In your separate, uh, action items, that's the reason I asked.
Thank you. So it was unanimous. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have fun.
Good luck.
Yes.
It's not like we would approve one and not approve the other. So.
Right.
Oh, really?
All right. The next one was proposals to amend the mask bylaws. Did everybody read their, uh?
Yes.
Yeah, I brought it.
We're gonna stay neutral on this. So any, any questions or discussion? Yeah, you guys have to, uh, tell Ms. Hunt whether you're in agreement or not.
Doesn't it say, well, when I was reading it, it said we didn't take a position on it, didn't it?
What? We haven't done it yet.
We haven't done it yet. Or it's not recommended.
I, I actually thought both amendments made sense to me. So, uh, I would move on behalf of the school committee that we, uh, tell Ms. Hunt that we approve both amendments.
Thank you. Seconded by Mrs. Burgess. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Now that I know when I'm voting, figure it out. We'll win state at three.
All right then. Now we have our school improvement plan for Plymouth South Middle School. We're gonna need more chairs.
We'll get some more chairs for you. Tonight we have the Plymouth South Middle School School Council. And, uh, tonight, uh, Assistant Principal Joe Murphy will be, uh, leading the presentation. Principal Morgan Wick had a, a death in the family, um, over the weekend and he is unable to attend, uh, tonight. So, uh, Mr. Murphy is going to, uh, fill in and, um, fill the role of, um, Acting Principal for the night. So he will, uh, lead the charge.
Very good. This is great. I always like it when we have to go find more chairs. So good turnout.
It's a good problem to have.
Good turnout.
Okay. Um, thanks for letting everybody know that about, uh, Mr. Morgan Wick's absence. So he's charged us with, uh, reporting out on where we are in, in our two-year cycle. We're at the midway point. And, um, very pleased to be coming to you tonight with this update because I think we've made some good strides in some of the changes that we're working on at Plymouth South Middle School. And, um, you know, a lot of it is due in, in part to these folks here. And we have a nice sampling of people, administration, teachers and parents as well. And so, um, without any further ado, let's just jump right into this.
You gonna introduce everybody as they go or?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, I think so Dennis, because, uh, we have a plan and the plan. The plan is that we're, we're gonna break this up into chunks and, and, and there's some finer details to this. And I, I've told these folks that, um, you know, if they're not really sure, um, about some of those finer details, I'll, I'll jump in and, and, and I will definitely, uh, give them my support. But, uh, I am Joe Murphy. I'm the Assistant Principal at Plymouth South Middle School. And, um, do we have the slideshow presentation that Mr. Morgan Wick had shared? We don't. Okay, that's fine.
We have it in front of us.
We have it on our.
Oh, you do? Okay. All right, that's fine. Um, it's a little bit more visually pleasing to look at.
Green, hold on one second.
Should we hold up?
It's the, it's on the agenda. It's green.
It's green.
It's got the, um. It's in our, it's green. It's got the school colors. Maybe while we're, while we're waiting to get that queued up, we can go introduce ourselves. So let me pass the microphone down.
There you go. Thank you, Joe.
Julie Benati, I am the math specialist.
Hi, I'm Rob Skinner. I'm the, uh, seventh grade science teacher on the second floor.
Amy Ring, seventh grade pre-algebra, second floor.
Krista Muratori, parent of an eighth grader. Thank you. Alicia Kearney, parent of a sixth grader and a ninth grader.
And school council member at South.
Yeah.
And I'm Justin Kearney, parent of a sixth grader.
You can probably tell just by looking at this cover slide, this is gonna be a lot nicer, a little bit more pleasant to look at than that dry, black and white document. Uh, and so what we've tried to do is pull out some of the bigger aspects of this plan. And, um, obviously you have the plan in front of you, so we can go over some of those finer details if you'd like. We're gonna use this as a guide to, to walk us through this, to give, to bring you up to, up to speed. Um, you can see we have, um, a number of school council members. Um, some of them were unable to be with us tonight, but we have some wonderful people here to help us with this. Um, so we're gonna jump right in. Goal number one is about promoting the academic achievement, student engagement and the ownership of learning through the educational program. And, um, I think Mrs. Ring and Mr. Benati are going to help us with that.
So one of the opportunities we had last year was we established a math data team. Can you hear me? And that data team was comprised of teachers from different grade levels, sixth, seventh and eighth, and the literacy integration specialists. So we had a good, uh, variety of views about what can we do to help improve our math scores? So we literally looked at the data. We looked at how students were responding to questions. We were looking for common mistakes. And we found that there were some things we could tackle, starting in sixth grade, moving up, using common language in the way we taught. Maybe looking at ways, we were presenting material that may lead to misleading the students unintentionally. And the only way we can discover that is to talk about our methods of teaching to each other among the different grade levels. We developed a common language for instruction of core concepts. So there were some things that we found that we really could attribute certain vocabulary to and make it consistent among the grade levels. So, um, for those of you, parents who've, you've, children have been fortunate enough to be citizens of the ringdom, you know that sometimes I make up some strange vocabulary in my room for fun. But I understand that underlying that are math core concepts and we need to be consistent among the grade levels. So it was just a way of getting together with our fellow teachers in different grade levels and talking about those things. And it's been a really wonderful way for us to have that time built within our school day. So it not only was the math data team, but going back to that, um, common planning that we have among the departments. That is really, it's bearing real fruit. It's leading to increased learning outcomes for the students. And we appreciate it as a staff. Um, one of the things that came out of that was the summer math initiative. It really came out of us discussing, okay, here's what you guys are doing in sixth grade. They come to us in seventh. They've done some beautiful work in sixth grade. Wow. They come to seventh and it's like we're starting all over. So we had these discussions. What's happening? We're losing things over the summer. So we decided to try the summer math initiative where we gave them a summer packet. The goal was to have them doing a little bit of math every week over the summer. Um, all the teachers worked on it in the different grade levels. We, we were trying to review what they had already done and we weren't introducing anything new. Trying to review what they had done the previous year so that when they came to us that school year, they hopefully were a little bit up on keeping things that they'd already gained. I, on the second floor, and I know this was true of Mrs. Billings on the third floor, got a great turnout for the math packets. I got 87% of them back. So I really, I, I found that to be very encouraging. Through our discussions, one of the things that came up in math data team was online platforms. How we could use different programs to help students on a more one-to-one basis in, in intervention type model. And that's where Mrs. Julie Benati, the math specialist, came in because she had some real suggestions about that and using it in her booster classes.
Julie, before you comment, could you just, could, do you mind sharing, uh, with the committee, some of the feedback you got from families about this? Because this, this whole idea about having, working on math skills over the summertime.
Yes.
It's a, it's a, something new for our community.
Yes.
And I think it struck some people a little bit by surprise.
Yes. And I, I, I heard negative feedback and positive feedback as well. Um, I've heard from parents about suggestions of how we could prove it for next year. So giving answer keys to all of the work that we're having them do. Uh, we did give reference sheets, so we got praised for those things. Yes, there were some questions about some of the things we had them do. You know, summer's for free time and for fun. But what's more fun than keeping some math skills going over the summer? So it's an attitude. It's the way you look at it. It's, we don't wanna lose the things that they've already gained. And parents come to us every year in the beginning of the school year in our parent conferences and they, they look at us earnestly. What can we do? Well, this is one of the things we can do. We can try to keep their skills fresh over the summer. So we're not starting at a negative stance, if you will, to build back up their skills, things that they'd already done before. So we have, we've talked about it in school council. We've talked about ways to improve it and going forward, how we would do that. Any questions about that in particular?
No.
Think through math booster class?
Math boosters a little bit?
Sure. Um, so this, this is my fourth year in the position as math specialist. When I first started, um, I, I was spending most of my time in the pre-algebra classrooms, teaching with Mrs. Ring and Mrs. Billings in seventh grade. Um, and what I was finding was that there's such a huge jump from sixth grade to seventh grade. There were a lot of students that were not supported and they were struggling. And what I was trying to do was find the gaps of their knowledge in seventh grade. And while they're in this, in that classroom, support them and find ways to help fill in those gaps. And I was finding that there just wasn't enough time to do all of that. So I along, you know, first brought up the idea to the administration and said, what if we tried developing a course that was for students that are struggling in pre-algebra but are not supported on an IEP? And, you know, everyone seemed to be on board with the idea. And so last year we started it. We took recommendations from sixth grade teachers from the previous year and their current seventh grade teachers. And we identified, um, we started small. We identified, um, about 10 students that would see me every other day. And I used the first steps program to identify their gaps and to help fill in those gaps. In addition to, um, kind of working on the current curriculum that they were working on in their pre-algebra classes. And we found that it was really successful. Students' grades did improve in their pre-algebra class. And students themselves were coming to me and saying, and to the, and to Mrs. Ring and Mrs. Billings, saying how happy they were that they were able to get that extra support because it was a small group and they were getting their questions answered. So, as Mrs. Ring mentioned earlier, we then, in, during our data team, we were having these conversations about online programs that could help enhance this booster program. And, um, we, I then, when I had the opportunity to go to the National Math Conference in Boston in the spring. And I attended a session that was about an RTI model and program and how to bring that into the schools. So I researched a whole bunch of different programs and we decided that the think-through math program was, um, the best one that would suit our students. It's a program that is individualized for each student. They take a, a placement test at the beginning and they're placed at a particular grade level. As they work through a lesson, if they struggle with that lesson, it drops them down to a lower grade level where they then get remediated for the math that they've missed, um, and then brings them back up to the current grade level. And so every student is working on something different. Some students are working on third grade material. Others are working on first or sixth or fifth. It's, they're kind of all over the place. And this year we've, we adopted the program and I've been, you know, with little interviews, I've been asking the kids what their thoughts are about the program and they're actually loving it. Um, so that's something that, that's the, that's kind of the booster class. Something else that we've done now, um, where I used to spend, um, most of my day in with, uh, co-teaching with the pre-algebra classes. Um, we shifted my focus a little bit this year and now I, um, students that are, um, on IEPs for math, they are, their schedules are changed a little bit and I have a seventh grade class. Those students are also taking, for the first time, they're also taking pre-algebra. And I have a group of students that are in, they, in place of problem solving, they take my class and they take algebra. So we, you know, research shows that students really should be exposed to all these different concepts. And hopefully this will help prepare them for when they get to Algebra I when they get to the high school.
Can I just wanna add to that? Uh, the booster program that Julie has implemented, it really allows the students, it's, it, it can be a rolling basis. So it's not as if they choose to be in boosters and they're there for the rest of the year. They get the help they need. We see if they want to stay in or come out and we can adjust their schedules accordingly. So it's a fluid in that way. And that allows us to cycle other students in. Julie and Shom and I, the other seventh grade math teacher, will talk about possible students that we think would be helped by the booster program. So it really has turned out to be a real benefit for those kids that wouldn't get services otherwise.
You could probably, probably gather that there's quite a, quite a bit of emphasis on math here and there's, there's quite a bit of reasoning behind that. First, I have math teachers that are probably with me, so you're gonna hear about, you know, their world. But one of the things that, uh, I was able to do with the principal at the beginning of last year is we really tried to use the data of our test scores and take a look and kind of ask ourselves, where are we at, at Plymouth South Middle School? What are we doing well? Where do we need to improve? And it was pretty glaring when we sat down and we compared our English Language Arts scores to our math scores. English Language Arts at Plymouth South Middle School has been strong. And if you look at our programming and our scheduling, uh, there's no wonder for that. We have a literacy team and a literacy ki- a coach that's built in to our school and they've been established there. And they're getting into classrooms and they're, they're working with not just the English coordinator, but they're also working with the teachers and the. but they're also working with the teachers in the classrooms. And what we have found is that our math scores are lower, they're noticeably lower. And when we take a look at, what do we have in our school that's different with math as compared to English? It's that emphasis, the emphasis that mathematics is just as important as, as English. And so we need to sort of put our eggs in that basket for now to see how do we get our kids up to that same level of performance. And so, you know, I was very excited when the teachers came back from the National Math Conference because a lot of the ideas that we had sort of started to put together at Plymouth South Middle School are the same things that they're telling teachers they bring back to their schools. So we're ahead of the curve. And I'm very excited to see where that leads us because there's a lot of change that's been going on in education with the demands of Common Core and higher levels of math are being, we're being asked to teach those to younger and younger children. And so developmentally, that's a big challenge. And so we don't put an emphasis on that. We're going to find ourselves in a situation where our kids aren't performing at the level where we want them to be and we don't want to be there. And so I think overall, English Language Arts is very strong and we are putting a lot of emphasis on math and that's, that's the reasoning behind all that. So I just wanted you to understand why it might seem like a lopsided conversation here and right now it is. And what we're trying to do is bring one side kind of up to the other. There's some additional changes here. One of the things we were able to identify, and this is really more at the district, at the district level, is that our students are also taking Science MCAS tests and we were realizing that there were kids that were getting Technology Engineering in eighth grade and they weren't getting that course by the time they took that test. And so to help address that, we moved those classes down to sixth and seventh grade so that those children got that curriculum delivered to them so they'd be better prepared to take the test in eighth grade. We have changed the way we've offered the virtual high school. We found that we didn't have a lot of very good results with that. We pared down the number of offerings and really limited it to math. And we're excited about seeing where, what kind of results we get from that. We've also recently received some training, our teachers, about addressing the needs of the Common Core for children's speaking and listening skills. And there is a wonderful uprising at the school right now where teachers have really embraced this and there's a uniform way that they're trying to deliver those skills in small increments so that our kids are able to get up in front of crowds and to speak logically and intelligently and address their audience. And I'm already starting to hear wonderful things, I've already seen wonderful things in the short amount of time that we've been doing that. So we have had quite a bit of change in our emphasis of curriculum and a lot of that is going along with also changing our school schedule to meet those needs. And these people have been wonderful in helping us to meet those needs and the teachers embracing the change. Our second goal is about fostering the social and emotional growth of our kids. And there have been quite a few, quite a few changes with this. We have grown our peer leadership program. We, we've started almost like a partnership program with peer leaders called Spark. And Mrs. Benati actually, you're familiar with this, correct? Would you mind telling these guys about this a little bit because it is new and I think it's worth getting into some of the detail behind it?
So we've decided to create an organization, a club for the kids called Spark, which is students promoting and reinforcing kindness. We want to do exactly that, spread kindness. We feel like while there will be some programs that we do that are anti-bullying, we don't want to focus on what students should not do but rather on what they should do. And so just, there are so many, there's so much research that shows how spreading kindness can help improve the school climate and just any kind of community and the health of physically and emotionally. And so the idea is that we, we have students that are loving this and wanting to just talk more about kindness and being just kind and gentle to others.
We're continuing, I know that Mrs. Bavini was on earlier. We're continuing, continuing some of our service learning projects. We have had teachers collaborating to raise funds to create wells for those in need of fresh water in Africa. We have had our music department and social studies department working together, building a Veterans Day program that is gaining in popularity and interest, where the kids perform musical acts for our veterans and we serve them breakfast. We have also, for years now, and again, this has been very successful, we have a cancer walk that is really headed up by the sixth grade and sixth grade kids and the teachers. And so we're keeping those things going. One of the things that we're just in the developmental stages of at this point, I was lucky enough to meet Michelle this summer and I know she told me she was part of No Place For Hate and so I sort of reached out to her and said, how do we get No Place For Hate connected to Plymouth South Middle School? So we've been batting around some ideas on how they could enhance our peer leadership program and we're hoping to have the kids go and present to No Place For Hate and give them updates on what we're working on, but also have the adults come in and as guest speakers to present to our peer leaders. We've made a lot of changes in our daily schedule and I think that they've been very beneficial to the kids because we have been able to provide more services to our children for counseling and for social skills groups because of the way that we've changed our building schedule and we freed up more time for those, for those people that would be working with those children. Like many of the other schools in Plymouth, we have a partnership with South Bay Mental Health. It's been very successful. We have seen wonderful results from those counselors working with our kids and we would, we hope to see that continue in the future. We've brought in outside providers to talk to our kids. For example, the Mark Program from Bridgewater State, talking about internet safety and bullying. And we're going to continue to, to look at other programs to bring into our school. So for Goal Three, I'm going to pass it on down.
Goal Three, we're looking to create opportunities for students to effectively and responsibly use technology to access, apply and share information as well as collaborate, develop and express ideas. Currently, the school is using Actively Learn in their strategic reading classes. So that's mostly used by the English department. It's used for the kids in the classes to collaborate online with the teacher and themselves about topics, ideas and things that they're reading in the book that they're going over. Think Through Math was talked about a little bit during the Goal One. Let's see. Starting to use the Google Apps and Google Classroom a lot more in the middle school. Most of the classroom, especially English, again for writing, Google Apps is a huge piece in getting that done. That's where all the students are doing their activities. Advanced student self-monitoring of academic performance through Aspen, that has been huge, not only for the students but for the parents. Much easier to keep tabs on what they're doing and chime in before it's too late. And it helps keep the kids in line so that they can monitor themselves as well. I think that's district-wide though, but it's definitely a huge step in the right direction.
Justin, can I add something to that?
Yep.
We actually have some, some training. We have a choice session coming up where some of our technology coaches in the building are going to be offering different sessions and the teachers will be able to go to whichever session that they think they need training in. And one of the things that we've, we've really identified recently at Plymouth South Middle School is that some of the advanced features of Aspen, the teachers aren't aware of how to navigate that. Like, for example, teachers can send out emails from Aspen to all their homes, all the families. They can send out via email, in a really simple way, digital progress reports. These are things that the teachers are very interested in learning. And so we have this very powerful system and I don't think we've maximized how to use it. And so we've really identified that. And one of the things that we want to do going forward is hopefully upgrade the usability by the teachers so that they can share more information with people at home. And so we're pretty excited about that and what I'm hoping is that those teachers that don't get that training can start learning from their peers.
They're also encouraging the use of things like Remind, which is the text messaging application that you could sign up for, Twitter and other social media platforms. As a parent, I'm seeing that that's coming along nicely, getting all sorts of different communications. And this is also from a parent's point of view. I think as a school district, we need to tighten that down a little bit and kind of standardize on some. There's just too many out there. I mean, it's nice that we're using them, but just too many. So we're working with that on the school council side to try to figure out what the right ones are and promote them. Reinforcing the use of the online textbook to support the lessons learned in school on homework. They redistributed some equipment, made an additional computer lab, also through the initiatives that were done through Park. They have like three and a half Chromebook carts and then I think at least one iPad cart to help get students using technology and computers much more frequently because they're more readily available. Offered opportunities for peer observation and training, or teacher training and the integration of technology. That's like professional development for the teachers. The technologist that's been brought into the school, I think has been a huge help. So they can query the technologist, give them an idea of what they want to do and the technologist will help them figure out the right way to present that material to the class, potentially even teach that lesson for the teacher. As the teacher learns how to use it and passes on the knowledge so that they can take that over and run with it and improve upon it. Organizing a school-wide involvement in the Hour of Code. Hour of Code is a one hour on a specific period, day of the year that a group of technology company leaders have put together to encourage coding. So the schools did a little pilot program, a couple of people last year. This year, we want to try to get that to be the entire school.
Mr. Skinner, you're, you're going to be participating this with your students, right?
Yes. Yeah, Amy Canelar will be coming in, should be running the Hour of Code in our building. And I'm looking forward to it too because I know less than the kids do at this point on how to do that. So I'm really looking forward to her and Amy's excellent. She's helped me a lot. We're going to be doing the Hour of Code. She's come in and done graphing from Google Apps, which is relatively new in the building, maybe or in the district for the last couple of, three years. Most people have been doing Microsoft and different things like that. So she's been fantastic about going around to the different classroom teachers. If you sign up in the computer lab, she'll come in. The first couple of classes, she'll run it, you watch, you get the hang of it and then she can leave and go help another couple of teachers do the same thing later on in the day. She's helped with graphing. I'm going to have her actually in my, in my lab tomorrow. We're doing graphing from an experiment that we did in the last couple of days. She'll be coming in, helping the kids with graphing and inserting that into a presentation. So she's fantastic, she's got a great personality, she's easygoing, which is great when she's working with me because I need that kind of support in there. So, and the other thing that she's done that I really appreciate is she's taken teachers in one-on-one on our planning periods. If you have, if, for your own business of running your classroom and preparing, she's been, I've gone down to her office and she's given me tutorials for an hour at a time on the different, different programs. So that's how she's helped us in, in our building.
And then our final bullet is still in the development phases, but we're working on getting a couple of clubs for the kids. Minecraft Club, Robotics, Coding, potentially some others. I know that one of the forefronts is Minecraft, which is great for the kids and social team building, creativity. It's just an all-round, even though it's a, in quotes here, game, it's, it's got a lot of life skills built into it.
And we're just lucky enough that we have Justin here and he's, he's got such a strong computer background. He's already started to talk to people in our technology department about building a private server for the kids, right? Because one of the things about playing Minecraft is you're potentially out on the web and we don't want to expose ourselves that way, so we're, we're taking a look at that, right?
Yep.
Okay, so Goal Four is to cultivate a stronger relationship between school and parents and we have some additional parents to help us with that.
On this goal, as a parent, in seeing, there's a huge difference from last year to looking into this year that the communication with the parents has improved so much. There's a lot of ways to get the parents to know what's going on within the school and they've doubled the amount of emails that go out and there's communication from the PTA and just all the input that's going on in the school. So you're seeing that through email. They're also trying to bring in other access points, as Justin was talking about, like the Twitter. So it's really grabbing the parents because when I talk to a lot of the family members, they say they don't always know what's going on, they feel a little lost. So you see that there's more access points. So you get more newsletters, you're getting the phone calls, you know, the automated phone calls coming out and then the letters that are addressing different things to kind of let you know what's going on with the activities. So that, you know, that's huge as a parent because we want to be involved and want to know what's going on. The other thing that I noticed this year is with the PTA and the school committee, I know it's really hard for teachers to kind of attend one night and then go to another night to like the school committee. So the one thing that they did this year is at the middle school is they put the PTA meeting and the school council meeting at the same time, which was huge because not too long ago, I attended the school meeting and then I knew there was some stuff going on at the PTA. So I was able to jump from that and go to the next meeting, which is huge because as a parent, I can't always rearrange my life and my schedule and be at the school all the time. So that made that parent, you know, involvement much better and I saw more teacher involvement there, which was huge because you want to see what the teachers have to say. And then Mr. Morgan Weck, of course, was in there. So there was a more community-based involvement, which was nice. I touched a little bit on the newsletter. The one thing I wish I was actually able to kind of be a part of it was the creation of having Plymouth South Middle School and PCIS come together on the field for, you know, the night under the lights. Again, I wish I was able to be involved in that, but I did hear a lot about the kids talking about it, a little bit about the parents' kind of involvement in it and how they really liked how it kind of brings the kids in and feel like they're getting a little more than just kind of playing on there. As I'm going to say, a little raggedy field. They get to go on to the nice, you know, terrain, have the lights, have the music. So I think that's huge and, you know, the parents want to see what's going on and the kids, it gets them all pumped up. So I think that was a really nice thing to see. Kristin, did you want to?
I just wanted to touch base on a little bit of the fundraising that we're trying to coordinate between the school and the families and for the various events that are going on. We just had a Halloween hoopla this past week and it was very successful. I know that from last year and this year, it increased double, if not a little bit more than that.
Last year was the first year we had had it, we had about a hundred and twenty kids. It's a Halloween dance with costumes and this year, our second year, our PTA has been awesome. I've never seen this many parents showing up to not just meetings, but really giving their time to the school and to the school community. And I think because of all their efforts, we had almost three hundred and fifty kids there. And when you take into consideration, we're a school of about eight fifty, eight sixty, that's a very large percentage. Needless to say, it's a great fundraiser, but really more importantly beyond that, it is getting kids back into our school for fun. And we have control of that, we know that they're safe and they're involved and it's wonderful. This PTA has been outstanding, I can't say enough good things about them.
And the kids heard that Mr. Skinner would take a pine that's in his.
And then we've organized a GoFundMe page and I know Justin has it readily available for me. So we can hopefully, we've put this on the Facebook page of PSMS and we're hoping to support the various activities of these students from, from fifth to eighth. And we're hoping it's successful. We're trying to spread the word between the PTA, our school council and the parents. And hopefully you and everyone's watching this tonight. I know it's, it's, so it's exciting. It's, I've seen, we've seen positive improvements and we're just hoping it continues. I think we have a great group of people around us between the parents and the teachers and the administration and it's going forward, I think.
There's a lot of information in front of you. There's a lot of information we just shared. Maybe it's too much, but my question is, are there things that you're wondering about? Are there things that we could answer or go in a little deeper with? I don't know if you have any questions.
Do you have questions, Ms. Hunt?
Actually, a couple of comments. The Under the Lights night was fantastic. And one thing that I wanted to mention too, that is I know my son plays on the boys' soccer team at North and one good thing that they did is he went back to the school to help. team at North and one good thing that they did is he went back to the school to help with that. So I think the good thing too is it gets the high schoolers involved with the middle schoolers and do a little bit of maybe mentoring or letting the students know, you know, what they're coming up to or what they can be a part of. So I loved having the high schoolers and I don't know, I know with soccer it was that way and I think they did field hockey the same night.
Yeah, they did.
And I don't know if the high school or field hockey team helped or not, but it was just great to have the interact, they did. The interaction between the four schools, I think was great.
I couldn't agree more and I've got to give a nice thank you to not just Plymouth North, but in particular to John Tossi, the phys ed teacher there. He was really key in helping to organize all this and, you know, there was a lot of great conversations that came out of this. And, you know, one of the things was some of the kids and some of the teachers that work in the southern, southern side of town saying, maybe this is something, when we have the new fields on itself, we could flip flop back and forth and that'll be a nice tradition to add to our community.
And then I have one more comment.
Yep, go ahead.
And hopefully this is not going to embarrass. I just, I'm, I'm so excited when I see parents here and I know that I always complain about the social media and all, everything that's out there that, you know, one or two really negative things. And I think that especially the Kearney's are a great example of, you know, getting involved. You've been, this is the second time we've seen you with a different school and it's just really nice. And I think it's really important if any parents are watching this to know that this is how you can make a change in your school. This is how you can have a say in what goes on in your school. And I think when those letters come out, come home asking for parents to serve on the school council, people don't quite know what's out there, but there are people out there saying, well, they wish that we could do this or, or we should do this, or they don't do this because. And this is really how you get involved and I just commend all three of you, but I know, like I said, this is the second time we've seen you and it's great. So congratulations.
Yeah, I've been trying to do, thank you. I've been trying to talk to a lot of the parents and letting them know this is where you can be heard and it's important and that you guys really do listen. And I think it's really important for the kids to see that, you know, this is what you need to do to try to cultivate better learning, better experience. So, yeah.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Sorenson?
Very well said. I'm glad you said that. Mr. Kearney, you said something before that I, I think, we also touched this topic at the Plymouth South High School Council meeting because we spoke about it there as well. And I want to preface the remark by saying that, you know, Aspen is a staple in the system now because it's at all grade levels, at all buildings, for all students and all families. So it's sort of like a staple. Now, the next thing is that you were talking about it before and it's written here as broadcast communication methods and I see REMIND is listed here. When we were at the Plymouth South High School meeting the other night, the students spoke positively about that communication system, REMIND. It was, it's a great discovery. So I'm beginning to wonder, like Aspen is across the system, if we found a communication system such as REMIND or something else that was adopted across the system at all buildings and all grade levels, it would become the main staple of communication. We don't have that yet because as you said a few moments ago, there are so many out there and every, every building and every grade level has their favorite.
Every teacher.
And every teacher has their favorite. And it's not, it's really not going to help the student as they move up through the grades to learn all these programs. So Aspen is a great precedent for what I'm suggesting.
Just two comments. To the, to Ms. Hunt's comment, I don't know how many people remember this, but Mr. Begley was on my school council when I was the principal at South Middle School a long time ago. I don't know how long ago.
Look what happened to him.
So that might discourage people.
Dennis, I remember.
Yeah, yes, for eight years, I get it.
To the, to the point about consistency, I think Aspen is a program that I think we, we have embraced because it does a very specific set of tasks for us. I think when communication, as a district, we, we've adopted this year for the first time ever, you know, Facebook and Twitter and we really have, have done that consistently. I see a lot of people gravitating to, to that and they go to that quite a bit. I think other forms of communication, you know, we can only get better at what we do. I think it's one, one of the things that we have to do is figure out what that next step is and how do we do it with purpose and how do we communicate that? Because I think Mr. Kearney is absolutely right. There are so many things out there. We can't put our effort in 20 things. We can put them in a few. So it's a matter of us really finding what works best for us. How do we publicize it and how do we get people to go to those different opportunities to really understand what we're trying to do? You know, I will tell you, five years from now it'll probably be four different products. You know, hopefully Aspen does stay and kind of we grow up with it, but as far as the communication means, you know, it's changing, it's dynamic. So it's a matter of how we grow with it.
Very good. Any other comments?
Any other comments, questions?
You guys did an excellent job.
I'd just like to personally thank the parents, Mr. and Mrs. Kearney, Mr. Muratari, the teachers. This is a long day for them and I appreciate you coming out because this is too much for one person to say and you guys are really the stakeholders here and you've done a great job in helping us put this all together and we're excited to see, you know, where we are at the end of the two-year cycle. So thank you. I appreciate it.
Very good. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Now we have break before we start our next topic. So let's say top of the hour, we'll be back at nine.
October seventeenth at the annual Fall Town Meeting, we had an amendment to the school department budget to allow for cost of living contractual allowances that were settled. That the amount is one million thirty-two thousand one hundred and seventy dollars. That would take the budget from eighty-four million one sixty-six nine oh one to eighty-five million one ninety-nine zero seven one. So, tonight, this is, this has to be approved by the committee to amend our budget so that we can process things moving forward.
Okay, this is a housekeeping measure. Do I have a motion? Ms. Badger?
I know the school committee approved the one million thirty-two thousand one hundred and seventy dollar increase and the FY sixteen budget is already approved by the passage of Article two A of the October seventeenth, twenty fifteen Fall Annual Town Meeting. This amends the FY sixteen budget from eighty-four million one hundred and sixty-six thousand nine hundred and one dollars, as approved by the passage of Article seven A of the April eleventh, twenty fifteen Spring Annual Town Meeting, to eighty-five million one hundred ninety-nine thousand and seventy-one dollars.
Very good. Do I have a second? Mr. Morgan had his hand up before. Any further discussion?
Could you repeat the mo-
There's too many numbers in there.
I just, I just want to comment on the motion. I think I heard her say an increase of-
One million thirty-two thousand one hundred and seventy dollars.
Yes. On the eighty-four.
Eighty-five million one ninety, eighty-five million one ninety-nine.
Yes.
Zero seven one.
The way, the way it was-
Did I say it wrong?
No. No, you said it right.
No, I got it. You said it so fast, I was lucky I got it all down.
If I say it too slow, I might mess it up, you know?
So, we have a motion, have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? unanimous. Thank you. Um, I could do that. Did you capture that wording, Mrs. Dargy, or do you need a-
I'm gonna send it to you right now.
I can send it to you. Oh, you're gonna, she's gonna send it to you? Deficiency.
Okay.
We didn't like the wording that was there. Because it sounded like we, it was an increase of eighty-four million dollars. Just rework the wording a little bit. Superintendent's goals.
Yes, tonight I have my goals for review. I'll go ahead and start with the first goal, which is district improvement. And, you know, based on our strategic plan, we will hear our strategic plan. It'll be presented next school committee meeting.
This is a preview.
This, yeah, it is a preview, definitely. We will, I will work to inform the district stakeholders and the community of the, of our new plan. One of the things that I would really like to do is get our strategic plan in the hands of our stakeholders. And I know that can be difficult because a lot of people are, are not, they're not always invested with what we're trying to do in the district. I want to get a document, our strategic plan, into everyone's hands. And I think that's going to be a challenge, but one of the things that I will do is communicate the renewed plan to the community at large and beyond. Town meeting members, board selectmen, residents, our parents. I, I think that that would be excellent for them to have in their hands. In addition, we're gonna generate a new quick reference card that we can get out to people so they can have a quick guide on, on what our strategic plan has, so they can, I called it last time, a plan on the page. Hopefully, it will be something that people will have and maybe reference. And that's one of the things that we do here at the school committee is we do drive our agendas by what's important and what's in our strategic plan. Our school improvement goals are all generated based on the strategic plan. And then, review the renewed plan with the school district, staff and administration. One of the things that I plan to do is go over the details of our strategic plan with our administration and our staff across the district. I think you're all aware that I have the opportunity to meet with our staff for, this will be our eighth year in a row. We do budget presentations to our staff. We'll also give highlights to the strategic plan so that they can see how our strategic plan is actually shaping up and how we plan to use our strategic plan for goal building. And I think a lot of you are familiar with a new evaluation system, which has the whole opportunity to set goals. And our strategic plan can help with that process. I will use the, our district Twitter account, our weekly Voyager Express newsletter, Voyager Magazine, Facebook, to, and actually, as well as Electronic School Board, to publicize and publish our strategic plan, make sure that is available to people in different venues. And we'll develop a aesthetically pleasing card that we can get out to everybody. I think people have used it, we've used it for our parent meetings. When we meet with them, we'll have that document to, to be shared with everyone. And then, communicate the plan, like I said, to everyone in different meetings that we have in the district. And, and I plan to get this done by May of twenty sixteen. I will bring forward a progress update in March. But I will also try to get information to you mid-cycle, you know, like December, let you know where you are within that continuum. As measured by, we will track the views on social media. So, what's nice about having documents placed online is we can actually track how many people are actually accessing it. We can do that with all the different means that we have out there. So, we can actually, when we put it out there, see how many people are actually looking at our strategic plan. And that'll be something that we'll bring forward to the school committee to see how successful we are, how successful we believe we will be with getting this out. Distribution of strategic plan documents to stakeholders. Again, I will have some data collected on where it goes, how many documents we publish, how many we print, and how it gets out to the community. And I'll lag, I'll log all our staff meetings and demonstrate to the committee how many presentations I've provided to our stakeholders as far as, 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 as I can get out. I mean, I plan on presenting as many times as I can to our, our staff, and we'll have documents to support that. That's goal one.
Do we want to, do we want to comment one at a time, or do we want to let the whole thing go and then come?
I think one, one at a time makes sense.
One at a time is better, right?
Yep.
So, does anybody have any comments or feedback, questions? I'm just curious, as measured by, what are the, gonna be the, what are the benchmarks we're gonna use for that?
Well, I think the benchmarks will be, right now, we don't have any way of really knowing who's getting our strategic plan. And we've published it before, we've put it out there. We will start tracking the, from the day it goes out and all the different venues that we send it out. And we'll, we'll collect that on how many, first of all, how many we actually send out. And we'll actually track through Facebook, Twitter, we'll track even with our own systems, who's opening it, what are they doing?
And we'll capture the current numbers. So, for example, the strategic plan isn't all over the place, but it is on Electronic School Board, and it has been in other things where we could track who opened it and looked at it.
We can, we can, we can check pre and post numbers on that. Of course, we have some new distribution means since the last strategic plan. So, what, what we can do is actually look at the difference from the first time we did this. Because we do have, you know, with my Constant Contact newsletter that I send out, I actually know who opens up what sections of the newsletter. I can actually go back to the very first time we sent it out, the first time, to see how many people actually opened it up back then and how they are with this new document, so.
That's good. I think we need that. We need to know where we are at so that we know how we're improving. Dr. Sorenson?
Dr. Maestis, something's unclear to me. We are going to use your SMART goals at the end of, when it comes time to evaluate the superintendent. Is this correct? We're gonna use these goals. Now, so, so with these as measured by, haven't you put yourself in a middle management position? Because if nobody opens up these documents, and we're, and we're measuring you based on how many of those have opened up, you're in middle management. I don't think you want to be there. So, I think we ought to figure, as measured by, that has nothing to do with how many people read these documents.
Hmm, no. I, I think we all know that we're not gonna make any final decisions based on an effort, right? So, you may put a big effort, got the program out, we all agreed that everything was successful, the rollout was as predicted, you used more social media and everything, but, but the numbers aren't as what we would like, where we would like them to be. That doesn't, that's not a bad reflection on you. It just means we need time to grow the program and I think, I think you can't do it without physically counting. You have to have some benchmark.
I don't disagree. I, I just feel that, that what you said is not what's written here. What you said is that we will measure the superintendent's success or lack of it based upon his objectives and how he meets his objective, not how many people read it.
Right, but remember, these are only input into his total evaluation. So, his evaluation, there's those, remember all those other categories? And this is only part of it that goes into that. So, when we're looking at these, these specific goals, then we will look at the as measured by, and we would, we would weight it. And depending on, you know, a lot, look at how long, how much time it takes to like roll out a new high school. So, we know that that takes time, we're moving it along, you're getting evaluated based on, is it trending correctly and everything else? And then, we look at his overall evaluation to say things like, you know, things that are not a goal per se, but the behavior of the superintendent checklist or whatever.
That works.
Other elements. Mrs. Betts?
I was just gonna say where it says measured by, it's just, you're just, we're just looking at the data, we're not judging the data. Because as measured by, tracking views, distribution of, so that he's doing it, not that we're judging how it's either being received or not received, just that we're tracking that information. That's how I'm reading it. And I think that's important to measure that so we can see, and then, we can see probably, you know, in going for the following year. So, if the tracking isn't where maybe we want it to be, and maybe different adjustments can be made for the next year's goal in accomplishing something different.
Correct. And it doesn't reflect badly on, because look at how many years it took us to get the AP numbers up, for example. It was like a goal every year. And we just agreed that it was gonna take time.
And there's no percentage here saying it increased by four percent or something like, I think it's just we're tracking it.
I'm glad I didn't ask that.
That we're just tracking it to get some information.
Yeah, I'm teasing. Go ahead.
So, I've got some numbers. I'm, not literal ones, but I know that you can look at like data on the national data, like of how many emails are read. I mean, there's, there's data you can get on the average amount of times an email is opened. I mean, I send out emails to seven thousand plus alumni and I get zero opens. You know, like, or zero dollars from it, which doesn't reflect good on me, but, you know, people clicked on it, that's all. So, there's, you know, conversions and you can get all that data, so it's, you know.
And it just tells you that-
Constant contact gives you all that.
So, we're, so we're asking you to set up all these new social medias. By tracking the numbers, we can find out, okay, you know what? So, we thought Twitter was a hot thing, but guess what? Nobody's, nobody's reacted by the Twitter numbers. But look at the Facebook numbers, they're off the chart. You know, that sort of thing. That's where we could say what worked, what didn't work.
Well, we can check also the demographic as well as to who's opening it, what gray levels. I mean, but we will know who, we actually know who these people are, you know? We, we know that, that, you know, it's pretty easy. My Friday newsletter, the analytics that comes out from that is, is pretty amazing. We know how many people look at it, how long they look at it, what they're looking at. And it's, it's pretty amazing the amount of opens that we get. We actually had a, about four years ago, we had a white paper written on, from Constant Contact as to, we had one of the highest open rates of, of all their customers. So, P, parents want to see what's going on. I, I would like for them to take more investment in the strategic plan because it really dictates what we're trying to do in the district. So, if there's a way that, to track it, we're gonna find a way, and hopefully, we can present that information to you as to if we're making a difference in reaching people with what people want, what they tell us they want us to, to be promoting. All right. All right, let's go to goal two. This is, the next one is centered around the Full Day K program. I think all of you know that we are one of the only few districts in the Commonwealth that do not offer a Full Day K across the board. So, this is going to be a huge presentation that we have on the thirtieth. And I think it's gonna be pretty interesting to see what your thoughts are on, on the budget, thoughts are on the configuration. And it'll be interesting to see if it makes that, that night and gets into the budget and actually gets to April Town Meeting. So, we're gonna determine the least disruptive model to introduce Full Day K to our families, determine staffing implications for additional classroom sections. We will, we've, we've had a lot of preliminary work into that already. We're gonna look at the furniture and supplies necessary to increase the sections, determine facility needs for implementation, transportation needs, itemized costs for implementation, and we'll determine the long-range financial model to understand state aid benefit. Keep in mind that with our Full Day K program, we will get some Chapter seventy reimbursement. We will spell that out. We'll, we'll put that on a, on a chart to actually take a look at when that, those dollars really start to help us. I will do this by reviewing the school capacities and space determinations, review of staff allocations for additional sections and faculty to increase resulting from students going from halftime to full-time, investigate staffing, furniture, supplies, equipment necessary for implementation, working with our facilities office to determine appropriateness of recommended spaces. Because keep in mind that we need to make sure that there's, there's equitable and appropriate spaces for our Full Day K program. Investigation of transportation options and cost implications for, for the options. Develop a document to demonstrate costs of implementation and a long, and we'll also demonstrate what that long-term funding looks like. The goal be completed by June twenty sixteen, based upon funding approvals at various levels. And the as measured by will be with information that will be presented to the school committee, on school capacities and the district elementary schools. Keep in mind that our school capacities will be demonstrated in a, in a, in a form of, of a table so you can actually see where we are now, what we'll, what we'll do in the future, and actually, the spaces that we're taking out of districts as, as we present. Then, I develop, I will develop a transportation report to determine true costs associated with busing. Because right now, we have a half-day bus that we're taking offline, and there are some benefits to, to, to the model that we're gonna be proposing on, on transportation. So, that is my goal. Let me move on to the next page here. Presentation of additional staff, furniture, supplies and equipment. We'll put that together, and you'll see exactly what the costs are for all of those. And then, we'll present that to you, school committee. And then, we'll include this into the budget for the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen budget. Keep in mind that that's gonna be a pretty interesting evening. So, hopefully, we'll have all this information prepared and on the table for you to review on the thirtieth.
So, this goal is really, I, I would change the, I will achieve this goal by, because this, this part of it is more towards implementation. You know, once the green light's been given. So, everything you're describing is the, the recommendation itself, putting together the recommendation. So, maybe the item D that you have, presentation to school committee with relevant information, move that. I will achieve this goal by presenting, having completed report and recommendations to the school committee by whenever.
Yep.
First quarter, second, you know, fourth quarter of this year, whatever.
Yep, got it.
Yes, Dr. Sorenson, sorry.
I agree with that, that recommendation. Under as measured by, you did a, a really good job of, of telling us that as measured by, we'll talk about transportation, how to pull it off and what it's gonna cost, about staffing and furniture and supplies and equipment. But, under as measured by, A represents the presentation of capacities without a recommendation. I'm thinking that A should include a recommendation because just telling us capacities is okay, but if you find out that there's no room in any of the buildings for any of this program, you're gonna have to tell us where you're gonna put it. I would think that would be in A.
Like, and presentation of school capacities and-
With recommendations.
With recommendations.
And on E there, inclusion of necessary budgetary items within the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen budget, if approved by PSC. Anybody else have any?
Can I, can I ask you a question on that recommendation? If he, if the superintendent's including it in the budget, that doesn't assume Plymouth School Committee approval. I mean, I, I would think it's his responsibility to include it into the budget whether we approve it or not. He presents the budget to us, then we present the budget to somebody else.
It'd be kind of foolish for him to put, to, uh, put in budget item for a project that we didn't approve. Because we're just gonna wipe out the budget line item.
Let me, let me, so we're gonna approve this, that's right, we're gonna approve this before we get, that's right, that's right. I got the timing right. We're gonna do this in November. We get the budget in December.
Right, that's why the rush for the special meeting, so that we can get in front of the budget process.
Thank you.
Next one.
Goal three. The community of Plymouth, the Commonwealth, Massachusetts and the nation are in the midst of a drug abuse and addiction epidemic. This goal was a hard one for me to write. I firmly believe in, in the statement. I, I think we have a lot of work to do in this area. Everywhere I go, everybody, they, you know, they ask, what are the schools doing, what are the schools doing, what are the schools doing? I know it's very difficult to put our finger on exactly what is the best thing to do to try to help with this. I put this goal together because it's my attempt to try to, to make a difference, and hopefully, we can do that, I can do that through this goal. While the school department has not seen an influx of drug-dependent students, the awareness of healthy living to promote lifelong wellness is the leading conversation as I travel through the school district and community. As a result of this, of these circumstance, of the, excuse me, as a result of the circumstance we are faced as a community and a just, district and community, I will work to promote health and wellness across the district to raise awareness of the need to nurture resiliency in our students. Talking with Dr. Sorenson earlier this evening, he provided a suggestion which I, I, I think it's, it makes great sense. In that last sentence, I will work to promote health and wellness across the district to raise awareness of the need to nurture healthy living, fostering-
Healthy behavioral choices.
Healthy, healthier-
Behavioral choices.
Behavioral choices.
And resiliency in our students.
Okay, that, that sounds excellent. Okay. To achieve this goal, collaborate with key stakeholders of the Plymouth community, introduce wellness programming, introduce community awareness forums, collaborate with school district administrators and staff. I will do this by determining the needs of the community in this area and working collaboratively to mo, to mobilize for change, working with key stakeholders of the community and beyond to introduce programming for students, working with the members of the Plymouth Youth Development Collaborative to provide opportunities for awareness in the form of forums and presentations. This will hopefully be demonstrated by May of twenty sixteen, that's the goal. As measured by, provide evidence to support the collaborative activities that are taking place. So, what I plan to do is provide you a listing of things that we are doing to help in this area. And I would say that we will continue to do this. This would not be just for the sake of this year, but hopefully, there'll be opportunities that will continue. Provide data to support pre and post student engagement in this area. I think it's pretty important that we take a look at the Communities That Care survey information. I think that's some good data to, to have to, to support this particular goal. And provide evidence to support the activities spearheaded by PYDC to mobilize efforts in, in this area. I will give a, an update in December and, and in March. So, this is goal three.
Any feedback on this one? Ms. Badger?
I'm just wondering, when you say provide evidence to support, supporting the collaborative activities that are taking place, will you also give us what was done last year as a comparison? Okay.
Yes. I think PYDC has kind of almost leapfrogged a lot of the activities that we were doing to focus on this because it's such a hot topic and a lot of concern. So, I think when you look at the activities that we had last year, we can do a pre, a pre, a pre and a post type of data review and, and bring that information to you. And that's something that's, that's, will help us to understand if we're helping to make a difference, bringing program into community, to the community, and, and so on.
Ms. Hunt?
Well, maybe this isn't the right time to ask you this. They had, they had an event or a forum last week.
Last week, yep.
But was it, I didn't hear about it.
Oh, yeah.
It was? Okay.
About fifty people there.
Yeah. I was just in the school and that's how I found out that it was there, so.
Yeah, we've, we've just recently formed a, a collaboration with Middleborough, Carver, Plymouth through a grant. So, that was the first kickoff event. There'll be, there'll be more.
Was it open to the public or was it a private meeting? Is that why?
It was open to the public.
It was? Okay.
Yeah, we didn't know about it.
No, yeah, well, nobody knew about it.
So, we didn't know about it. So, how, can you let us know on the website?
Yep, yep. There, there was a dinner ahead of time, but that was only for members of PYDC, and then, it was open to the general public, the forum itself.
You know what would help, I think, on that one? Because PYDC, I, I think, does a lot of really good work. I think they're very, unfortunately, their meetings are in the morning, and, and Dr. Maestis can go all the time. It's hard for my work schedule. But I think it would be productive for us to add that to the list of meetings that we get a readout on, you know, and the minutes.
I think that would be-
We share it with the whole committee and-
Well, you know what? It's very relevant. It's a, it's a-
I mean, ongoing, just-
Yep, everyone shows up.
Make it one of the lists that he'll give a readout on.
You know, nobody knows about it.
Yeah.
We used to have, Jen Pinto, Jen Pinto, when she was the director, she used to come. I know Ms. Bertrades and I were on those meetings. We used to go to them all the time.
Yeah, we did.
And we still get them occasionally. You know, Sean will give us an update because he chairs it, and Sean Halpern gives us an update. He'll mention it.
We have minutes and everything.
What I'm talking about is more like the building committee, where I want to be able to turn to somebody and say, in this case, Dr. Maestis, because he's there every time, or, or Dr. Campbell, whoever. And, and you could just give us, there was, it's, they meet once a month and just give the readout of what they're doing and what they're working on. I think that would be good for everybody. And they put out good minutes and stuff, so we should just get them circulated to us.
It's very good.
I would reword your, I will achieve this goal by, because it says significant progress will be demonstrated by May two thousand and sixteen.
I was just looking at that.
So, maybe successfully, the goal, goal by successfully implementing the program groundwork by May two thousand and sixteen.
It's a long-term thing.
Because you listed a whole bunch of things she'll be trying to do and-
No, that's not gonna happen.
Would it, sorry.
No.
Would it be something, would it be possible, I know when you're always talking about programming, and I know a lot of it comes at the last minute, but you know how the VPA does a beautiful poster or something where you could, we could all see it and anybody could see, like, these are the things, the events that are coming up throughout the year that relate to this topic, if that's something that's-
I think the problem that you have is there are so many agencies all working to do things with VPA. It's one person that's organizing it, I think. There are, there are so many things happening right now with this. We can publicize clearly the things that we organize and that we have control of. And we can continue to try to share those out. But I think that's one of the things that, like, the, the event that happened last week, a call went out. We had, it was on Facebook, I mean- Yeah, well, you-
No call.
That's one of the few calls I didn't get.
But there's a lot of groups.
Yeah, a lot of other calls.
The, the League of Women Voters is doing a study group on, on this drug issue. There was a forum by the Plymouth Area Interfaith Clergy. They had a, at six o'clock last Friday, they had a vigil about this. So, there's so much going on in the community. It's too bad that there wasn't a way to get it a little bit coordinated so that everyone kind of knew what everyone else was doing.
Well, that's what the PYDC is trying to do, but it's, you know, it's a big effort.
Yeah.
So, but they, but they have a lot of departments represented there. I mean, you have your state elected officials and the DA's office, and it's a lot of-
There's, there are a lot of groups out there trying to do stuff. There are, I'm aware of four different major task force that are all working. I get invited to a lot of meetings that I can't even go to because there's so many, and there, it, it's, 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 um, you know, I think what we're trying to do is just organize some, some very purposeful opportunities with the information that we have that we can work with our children and families, and, and that, that can be difficult in itself, you know?
Ms. Hunt?
Would it, would that be something that it would be advisable to have a school committee member, the liaison, a, a part of it? I know, from what I understand, the grant is the same grant that, that the Edge campaign used to have. And I sat on that, I represented the school committee on that one. So, I didn't know if, it seems to be the same group of-
And I sat on that, I represented the school committee on that one, so, I didn't know if, it seems to be the same group of stakeholders? And there was a school committee person on, on it?
Yeah, Dennis is on it, yeah.
Oh, you go, you go to, oh, but it's in the morning, so you can't go.
It's in the morning, so, we have multiple, we have Sean, we have Gary, Chris is there a lot of times.
I didn't realize you were on it.
We, we run it, it's, it's run by the Plymouth Schools and, you know, that's, it's, um-
They usually have the, the selectmen, there's usually somebody from the selectmen there, right?
And yeah, it's like the same setup that, that the, the Edge, the Edge did as well, cause I think it's the same grant was transferred from one to the other.
We don't have any grant money.
Yeah.
And our, our goal was to do, do it without grants, because, you know, sometimes grants kinda skew the, the process, so, we've, we've been able to do this, so. Yeah, it's, uh, it's a work in progress, I think now is a, is, is, um, a very important time to have, uh, collaboration and hopefully we can make a difference.
That's why I think it would be beneficial to do that readout.
Yeah.
Okay, next one.
The next one is, uh, relative to social media, I think you all know, I mentioned this on opening day, that, uh, I think we've all had some, somewhat, um, some concern over social media. Uh, we've, we've decided as a district to, uh, adopt Facebook, Twitter and Instagram and Google Plus. Um, what we are going to be able to do is not only have our Voyager Express and Voyager, Voyager magazines, um, get out and do robo-calls. Um, we have a, a lot, a great deal of information, um, that we're sending out, hopefully we can have more and more people pay attention to, um, some of these other venues that we're, uh, working on. We can very easily track, uh, Facebook, Twitter, uh, just by followers and people that, that look at our stuff, um, we'll continue to do that. We'll investigate the most commonly used social media platforms, which we have, um, and, and we, we, we have decided to go with, uh, Facebook and Twitter. Uh, Google Plus is something that not too many people are familiar, um, uh, with, but Google Plus, every single user in the district that has an email account can actually be part of Google Plus and we're gonna try to foster that, uh, that model and, and we'll see how we can, um, enhance communication through that. We'll work to implement, implement the new communication model, identify resource to assist with implementing. Um, I will do this by introducing recommended social media apps to the district, convey the new method of communication to the community and promote the use of recommended social media platforms to the district. Um, we have put together a little, uh, commercial, I'm not sure how many of you have seen it, we'll, uh, we've had it out on social media advertising that the district does foster, um, these platforms. Uh, this goal will be accomplished by, uh, June twenty sixteen, uh, keep in mind it'll be accomplished, I think, social media, the, this section of our social media piece will be, uh, hope, uh, done by June, we hope. And I say that because, um, I think, um, social media is going to be, uh, an evolving, uh, device for communication. Uh, as measured by the introduction of social media model and documentation to support implementation, providing data to demonstrate social media communications and level of stakeholder satisfaction. One of the things that I'm, um, planning on doing is, um, sending out a stakeholder, uh, survey to our, um, users to find out what they like about our new social media platform, uh, at the tail end of, of the school year, um, and also what improvements would they like to see on our social media platform? So they can actually get some level of understanding of what, um, our, our intent is, what they'd like us to, to use. Uh, provide data to demonstrate and increase communication through social media via survey offered to stakeholders and, um, this goal will be, um, we'll give an update in December and an update in March.
Any questions on this one?
The next goal is, um, the South High School Project. Uh, so district continues to address the, the school facility needs at the high school level. I will, uh, remain committed to leading the process to complete the construction of new Plymouth South High School. Um, I will do this by playing a leadership role in meetings, uh, in meeting the timelines to bring the project in on schedule. Um, build, uh, September twenty seventeen, complete the campus of, uh, September twenty eighteen. Ensure that all the benchmarks with the MSBA are met, I think a lot of you are familiar with, uh, the, the timeline and the process that MSBA has for us to make sure that we're in, in line with everything. We have, um, weekly meetings with our, our, uh, team, with Agassini Bacon, Ted Gentry and Associates and our building committee. Uh, those are very key, um, meetings that we have, I think, uh, those of you that are on building committee, you know, a lot of, uh, uh, decisions get made. A very important, uh, spur of the moment decisions have to be made and that's part of the process as we go through this to meet our timeline. Um, communicating with the MSB and designated representatives to ensure timeline, construction quality and budget guidelines are met. Uh, this is under the, I will do this by, uh, working with the OPM to ensure timeline, construct quality and budget guidelines are met. Keep in mind that our, we're very concerned, uh, about meeting, uh, our budget, we have, um, some contingency items that we are, um, looking at and we hope to, to really, uh, bring this, um, building in on budget. Uh, the goal is a multi-year goal and will be accomplished by September twenty eighteen. As measured by, uh, meeting construction timelines, minutes of construction meetings, reports, uh, at school committee meetings and using social media and, and district communication means. Um, I'll give an update in November and an update in March and, um, like I said before, this is an ongoing goal.
Okay. Very good, any questions on this one?
The last goal is, um, a professional practice goal and I'm not sure how many of you have, uh, purchased the book, uh, David and Goliath, but if you haven't purchased it, I would recommend that you do that. Um, I got this book for all our administrators, um, over the summer and it's a book that is really taking a look at how the underdog can actually, um, uh, how they, how they succeed, how they can succeed and how circumstances in life can actually, um, help you to succeed. Um, I am, uh, reviewing this book, uh, chapter by chapter, um, with our principal coordinator and directors. Um, during the two, two thousand fifteen, sixteen academic school year, I will devote twenty percent of, of the twice monthly principal coordinator director meetings to reviewing the content of Malcolm Gladwell's David and Goliath and strive to connect the examples demonstrated in Gladwell's book to educational leadership and school change. To achieve this goal, I will provide copies to our administrators, lead discussions on, uh, the chapter of the book, uh, chapters of the book. Foster an environment for PCD members to make connections from reading to educational practice. Uh, I will achieve this goal by, um, this goal will be accomplished by the end of the twenty sixteen academic school year. And as measured by meeting agendas aligned with this, I'll, I'll provide agendas that have, uh, when we actually do this and how much time we spend on it. Surveying PCD members after the exercise is com- complete, I wanna find out from them what they got out of it. Uh, it's, it's very enlightening reading and it's actually, uh, a great teaching, um, document. And provide appropriate resources to support this goal. I'll give you an update in December and an update in March.
So, the goal will be achieved by, it's the twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen?
Yes.
School year. And so it'll be the first, it'll be by June?
Yes, it will be by June.
Any questions on this one? It's not my favorite author, but-
Uh, it's a great book, it's a good book, it's a great book.
I hear a lot of people like it.
I liked it.
It's really good. I just, uh, just this afternoon, I sent a quote to one of our principals because of a situation they were dealing with and it's so true, there was some, you know, it's, some really good information in it and it can really lead our, uh, principals to think differently and, and, and that's what we would like to do.
That's good.
So, this is an action item for you, uh, for your-
So, we reviewed the goals and provided feedback, do we have a motion to accept?
With, um, with amendments, changes?
I'll, uh, approve, uh, the, uh, goals for, uh, the superintendent for two thousand fifteen, sixteen with the, uh, with the, uh, added changes.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mrs. Betts, any further discussion, all those in favor? Very good. Have you ever read his book Blink?
Yes.
There's a counter book called Think.
Called what?
Think.
Think?
And, anyway.
Better than Blink?
I thought it was better than Blink. It's good, alright, school fundraisers. Anybody have? Everybody was looking at me, I don't have any updates.
Usually look at me.
It's changed.
Okay, no updates there, that's worth talking about. So then, um, reports and proposals from committee members, Ms. Hunt.
Um, I just have one thing and I know that Dr. Miestis is probably too modest to talk about it, but, um, I attended MasQ, um, the week before last as, uh, for my professional life and I had, uh, I was very, uh, honored and proud to hear that Dr. Miestis received a beautiful award, I got to see it. Um, big blown glass, um, trophy for the innovative award, I believe that that's what it was called, the administrators' in- innovative award. Um, so he got to address everyone at MasQ, which is the big technology conference in Mass- in Massachusetts. Um, and it was fun, I think that also Plymouth had the most, I think, one of the, one of the day's attendees and we actually, and they invited me to join them, which was an honor to have our picture taken in the middle of Gillette Stadium, so I was able to be in that picture as well with them, but, um, I know he probably isn't gonna brag about it, but I was very proud and, um, everyone there knew who he was and was very excited that he, he won that award.
We did congratulate him a few meetings ago, remember?
Oh, did we? Okay, well, yeah, I know he didn't, he's got it since, so.
Now he has it.
Yes, yes, so it's cool, it was cool.
Very nice.
It was very nice.
Ms. Badger?
I'll start off with my usual, we, um, the Alumni Association is not meeting in November, but we are encouraging everybody to attend the, um, Mud Run at South High School on, um, November twenty ninth. And, but our next meeting will be December seventeenth at six o'clock in their usual RE/MAX building in the Bennys parking lot, I mean, Bennys Parking, but I don't know, sorry.
Plaza.
Plaza, thank you, my brain has gone. Um, and also, last week, we had a, um, a Pilgrimage Collaborative meeting where we approved the reimbursements back to the district. I, of course, left my paper at home with the reimbursements, but it was like thirteen hundred dollars or something like that, back to the district itself. Um, and then, we're also working on a teacher contract there, the, for the Pilgrimage Collaborative, we're a little bit behind on the teacher contract and, um, but the Pilgrim Academy is, the expansion should be open fairly soon and there'll be an open house, so I'll be sure to let everybody know, they've done a lot of work on that new building to be able to accept more students and be more accommodating to them. Um, let's see, and then, oh, and the other day I was at a meeting and, uh, Selectman Provinzano brought up to, to the fact that there is the second annual, um, oh, I just-
Trivia?
Trivia night and that is gonna be supporting Plymouth Sunrise Rotary Scholarship Fund on Friday. And he wanted to know why we didn't have a team yet and I told him because I didn't, nobody knew about it, um, or we didn't know about it collectively, um, and so-
Did you do that again?
It's this Friday and we wanted to know if we wanted to put a team together, it's two hundred dollars for a team and we can have between four and eight people.
And we did it last year.
Yeah.
Yes, we did it last year.
So, if you're interested, we'll put it together after, think about it, what else, what else are you doing on Friday night?
We had a great time last year, it was a lot of fun last year.
And I think you can bring your own food and stuff like that, yeah, I couldn't go, cause I had, I was-
You don't count. We had a good time. It was good.
So, think about it.
Eight dollars will cost, eight people will cost us less.
We have to make a decision pretty quick, so they-
Choose for eight, some prices.
Right.
Who's gonna coordinate that, since it has to be?
I'll do it.
Michelle.
I'll do it.
We nominate, we already have a teacher that's gonna join us, that joined us last time, so.
So, see me at the end of the meeting.
We can probably know when we get there. We know how many, if we need to get extra people, if we don't have enough among ourselves.
Yeah, you can get other people.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We don't know how many of us are-
And if we need a creative name, do we need a creative name?
Oh, how many of us are going, then, then you know what, who to get.
Is it eight to a table?
Eight to a table, so this would be twenty-five dollars apiece.
Yep.
Yeah, if seven of us are going.
That's what I'm saying, we need to know soon, so that-
Do you have any ringers in your family or friends, we need ringers.
I have one.
Thomas was a good ringer last year, we did good last year.
I get nervous at these things and can't think of anything.
Anybody else?
Bob, your wife?
Well, it's just that we went to Mount Pleasant.
Your wife came last year, but she didn't say, so she could apply.
I was gonna just say that.
Oh, okay.
Uh, she's out of town, so I won't be able to go.
Yeah, we went, I had a, a, just a few quick things, I just, uh, Dr. Miestis touched on the, uh, the advisory dinner, um,
Yeah, we went to that.
Which was really, really good and I wanted to give feedback that, um, I was in one of the breakout sessions for child development and I thought it was, uh, it achieved all the goals of that night in that there were business owners that came, uh, three or four of them and plus teachers from other, uh, facilities in the South Shore and, um, they provided feedback to the kids that were there, the, the, uh, kids that are in the program as to what they needed to work on, um, additionally to get it, to be, get a viable job out in, you know, out in the real world, so.
That's great.
It was, it was very well, I thought, very well put together and, uh, executed.
The speakers were excellent.
I thought, yeah, having the kids were great, it was great, yeah, bringing them back is wonderful.
It was very good. And then, um, we went on the tour of Mount Pleasant, Mr. Morgan, Ms. Badger, Mrs. Burgess, that, did you guys go?
No, I had another meeting that morning.
It was, it was very, very nice, um, believe it or not, I'm approaching twelve years doing this and that was the first tour I had of Mount Pleasant, like a detailed tour, I mean, I think I've been there for meetings over the years, but not a tour of the building. And, uh, it was really nice and the thing I wa- I took, my takeaway from that was, um, I just wanna make sure that we, we never see, they don't come up on our list of capital outlay projects, because thank God there's no major problems there. But, I, one of some of the feedback I was getting was, it, it, it looked like it needed a coat of paint inside from top to bottom and, um, Mary Mello was telling me that she can't remember the last time it was painted and she's been there a long time and so, uh, that was something I thought we, we should look at, just to keep it, I mean, it's a, it's a jewel of the town, right, it's been an op- continuous operation for so long, we shouldn't let it, uh, disintegrate or deteriorate.
It's my elementary school.
And there's many of us that-
I went there for elementary school.
She went there for elementary, I went there for elementary, yeah, and there's a lot of people in town that, uh-
So, I was thinking, maybe we could find out how much it would cost to do something like that or any other minor repairs that they have, I know they had some water situations, but, uh, we were told that, um, Mr. Montron was on top of all those and had fixed quite a few of them. Um, but if, if there's anything else, since they weren't on the list, maybe we could, uh-
Yeah, we did a lot of work through the summer.
Make sure they care for it, really break it up over two years instead of all in one year, do the first floor one year, the second floor the next year or something.
There's three floors, cause the basement, we could get the basement too.
The basement, so you know what I mean.
That's big, yeah.
Breaking it up rather than trying to do one big, um, cause right now we're not doing anything, so.
Yep.
It'd be nice to chip away at it, because it was beautiful, I thought it was a beautiful building, very nice.
And some, some parents have expressed wanting to come in and paint it themselves, which we know they can't do, but clearly other people are seeing that that is a, is a need.
Yeah, you could see, you know.
I have, uh, I made a note, so.
But the way that they have utilized, the amazing thing there is the building is so old, was it a hundred and ten year old?
Yes, hundred and ten.
And, um, obviously it's been repurposed so many times over the years, but they use every inch of that building, it is incredible. And, I mean, the way that they designed the lockers out in the hallway, um, cause they didn't have enough closets and they just closed off the spaces very creatively. Nothing looked cluttered, right?
Yeah, but it seemed-
Everything looked very organized and-
When I went there, that was all coat hooks all along there where they, yeah, where they took off the, you could see where the coat hooks were, they left all that, but it was interesting, yeah, they, so they just made it-
And there was a, a picture of Mrs. Burgess in an article about her first grade class, first grade, right?
No, no, I think it was fourth grade.
Fourth grade class.
Yeah.
Fourth grade. She's right there by the front door as you go in?
Margit Clausen.
Yes, that's who it was.
Well, we're touring at ne- we're touring at next meeting, right?
Yeah, my mother even went there.
We're touring it at the next meeting.
Ironically, I have never gone, now I'm gonna go twice in one month.
Right.
Yeah, so even my mother went there.
We'll all get to see it, that'd be great.
When I went there, they were, like, first and second grade were in one class.
Really?
Yeah, they had two grades in each class.
Oh, okay, yeah, so we were, how would they do that, cause I had, yeah, we had one, two, three.
There's only four rooms or something like that.
And then four, five, six upstairs, yeah.
Wow.
And then we had Girl Scouts in the basement.
Well, it's just, two events that were very well done and very well carried out. So now, the building committee.
Oh, the building committee. The building committee itself hasn't met, it will meet a week from this Thursday. But it's part of the anaerobic digestion, I told you, I was going to go to a meeting. And I went to the meeting with the bidders, and there were 11 bidders. And then we did go up to the sewage treatment plant, and not inside, thank goodness. But we just looked at where it would be and got a whole lay of the land, with the town has over 100 acres up there. And they have a lot of piles of, like, gravel and sand, and different things that they can use for different projects. So, it was an interesting tour, and it's right near the wind turbine, it's not far from the wind turbine. So it was a good tour.
Very good.
Yeah, so the bids aren't coming in until, I think it was the 12th of December. So, nothing will be done as far as meetings until then.
Okay, so bids are due on 12/12. Okay. Personnel reports, Dr. Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Begley, we have three to announce this evening. We have one certificated appointment, one classified appointment, and one resignation.
Very good, thank you. Home education plans, Dr. Miestis?
Yes, tonight, we have one home education plan in your agenda for your approval. It has been reviewed by Dr. Halpin's office and has met all the requirements for a home education plan in the district, and I recommend approval.
This is an action item, do I hear a motion?
Move the recommendation administration.
And seconded by Ms. Badger, any further discussion? All those in favor? Accounts payable warrant, Ms. Badger.
Where school committee members have been provided with a copy of the cost and or transfer and transaction summary report and warrant for review, I move that the Plymouth School Committee accept and approve the reports and accounts payable, S 11015, dated November 5th, 2015, in the amount of $1,799,985,85 cents, as presented. See, I messed up when I slowed down.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Ms. Hunt, I think, got there first. Any, any further discussion? All those in favor? Minutes from September 14th. Do we have any feedback? Changes, corrections, everybody okay? Do I have a motion then, Ms. Badger?
I move that we approve the minutes as presented from September 14th.
And a second? Ms. Hunt seconds it? Any further discussion? All those in favor? Anamis.
I just had a question, though.
Too late.
Sorry, sorry.
Go ahead.
Maybe it's just the semantics, because this is actually two meetings, this is an executive session, and it's the regular meeting, were they supposed to be done separately?
Yeah, so they recorded them separately, yes, so we took a vote to go out into executive session and.
But I'm saying, with us to approve the minutes, are we supposed to approve them separately? We just, we just approve them together. But because they were two separate meetings, I'm just wondering, because in the past, we've done the executive meeting separate than the regular meeting.
No, I think what, September 14th was a reissue, it was the one that we remet to make the correction.
Yeah, it's just a correction.
And it's being resubmitted. The last meeting, we had to have an executive session to talk about the executive session minutes.
I think you're talking about the next set.
Oh, the next set.
I think that might be what you're talking about, because there's an executive session, and then there's the regular minutes in the same.
Yeah, they're in the same one.
That's the next one, that's October 17th.
No, in this one, I'm looking at the minutes right now, and it's, the first part is the executive session. And then it goes into, goes out of executive session, and then we go into our regular meeting. But in the past, we've done the executive session, we've voted on them separately. That's all I'm asking.
The motion.
It's just the motion to go into, it's not the executive session itself. You know what I mean?
Yep.
Unless, unless I'm not looking at it, right? I believe it's just the motion to go into executive session.
Yeah, it's just a motion.
Oh, okay, okay.
October 17th.
The minutes of October 17th.
Do we have a second?
I think it says you were absent.
Yeah.
Uh, see that?
On the 17th?
Yeah.
That's what it says.
That was town meeting.
Town meeting. Okay, never mind.
So I'll move them.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan seconds it, any further discussion? Ms. Badger?
It says that we had joined the meeting at 7:56, but we didn't, don't we not have joined it until the end of the town meeting?
Correct.
Okay.
Remains open.
So whenever it got open.
But I was there on the 19th.
At the end of town meeting, it would have.
At four.
I, I did that, so that's my fault, probably.
It was around 4:00, so we can look to see what the town has for the official.
Did we join the meeting, or we had joined executive session?
We did it both, we have an adjoining at 7:56 on the executive session, and then an adjoining at 7:56 for the regular session.
Okay.
Mr.?
That's what I was going to say, we ended the executive session, but maintained the regular.
Right, but if you look at the adjoining, it says to adjoint the special meeting of Plymouth School Committee, the meeting was adjoint at, because we have it twice, if you, if you look at 3.0 other, and then you look at the end of page one, it says into executive session at 7:35, and then it says out of executive session at 7:56. And then 4.0 has the meeting adjourning completely.
Right, that would have been adjourned at the close of town.
And I could have just put it in the wrong spot, when I put the adjoint, I didn't, I, that should have just been the executive session that had joined at that time.
So the only thing we need to change is the adjoining at four, three, whatever.
Whatever town meeting closed that.
Okay.
Adjourned it.
Sorry, that's maybe like four something, so it's 15.
So, amend it, your motion, go ahead, go ahead.
Does it, do you have to know when, like, people left, if they couldn't stay the whole time, does that make a difference?
Only if there was a decision made or if something to record.
And there wasn't anything.
There wasn't anything, okay.
No, there wasn't anything.
It's just there in case.
We need to.
There wasn't anything.
Yeah, I just didn't know.
Good God.
On the 19th, I'll move it.
Well, we haven't voted this.
Wait a minute, you're messing me up here tonight, hold on, hold on.
I don't want to mess you right back to you.
I'll come right back to you.
We're still on the 17th?
We're still on the 17th, so now we have the motion, we have it seconded, we have the change.
Yeah, sorry.
That's the point of clarification.
No, I did it.
I hate to belabor this, it's getting late, but we lost our quorum in the middle of the day in town meeting. So we really can't adjourn a meeting that dissolved in the middle of the day. So I really do think that this, these minutes right here should say the executive session, session adjourned at, or closed, whatever word, at 7:56 a.m.
Yep.
And then, as far as the other meetings are concerned, there was, the meeting dissolved, you can't really.
Yeah, by like 12:30.
Well, then we could try to capture when we lost the.
You can try to capture that, go right ahead.
Thanks.
And then we leave.
So I, I think that we can approve these executive session minutes as presented, because it did adjourn at 7:56 a.m.
Yes, that is right.
And then the other one absolved.
I haven't told.
It just dissolved at, at some point during the morning.
When that last per, when the, when.
Around 1:00.
Fourth person left.
Something like that.
Yeah, because I had to leave at 12 for work.
Throw out a number.
We're.
Morgan left around. You left at 2:00.
2:00.
2:00, that's when we lost it, 2:00. Mr. Morgan's fault. So now, we have to ask for the vote, right?
Sure.
Because we, I didn't ask, right?
I don't know where voting at now.
I lost track of whether I asked for it or not.
I have a motion and a second.
Yes, okay, thank you. So, no further discussion, all those in favor?
Oh, I can't.
And we have an abstention?
Yeah, I know, two abstentions.
Two abstentions, Mrs. Burgess and Mrs. Betts.
Okay.
Everybody else in favor? Now we have October 19th's executive session.
That one I'll move.
Thank you.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Badger. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Anamis, and one abstention, so it's not unanimous. One abstention and everybody else in favor. All right, that was a long evening, a lot of different topics. But, we actually, we went over, but looking at it, I, I'm happy that we got there at 10:00, so. Without objection, we're adjourned at 10:02.